With us tonight is going to give us the thought for the day, Ms. Anna Campbell.
Our thought from, our thought for today comes from Albert Eisenstein. Peace cannot be kept by force, it can only be achieved by understanding.
Thank you, very appropriate. Would the parents of these students and the students as well, and any administrators from sale, please stand and be recognized? We're grateful you're here with us tonight, thank you. Uh, we'll go on to changes and additions, Ms. Lewis Butler.
The superintendent recommends approval of changes in addition to the April tenth, twenty eighteen school board meeting agenda as presented. Number one, add item twenty-two point zero one, continuing concern for board members. Small enterprise workshop, Georgia Joy Bourne, school board member. Number two, item eighteen point zero one, superintendent recommends approval of the Edmentum credit retriever renewal, twenty eighteen through twenty nineteen, replace documentation. Number three, add documentation to item eighteen point zero four, item for consideration. This agenda item was created as a placeholder. The construction manager developed the final guarantee maximum price contract. And due to long lead time for ordering materials, it is imperative that the agenda item be approved to meet the schedule to complete the project prior to start of twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen school year. The agenda item was updated April the eighth, twenty eighteen. Board meeting to include contract documents and the accurate contract amount.
Thank you, do you have a motion to approve?
I've approved.
Second?
Moved by Wood, second by Bowen, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, Superintendent Spotlight, I believe we have some more special guests with us. Um, all of our students here today, we're so glad you're here. Um, the James S. Rickards High School, twenty eighteen, boys basketball state runner-up, class six A, which is the big time, right, fellas?
Yes.
Yes. Superintendent?
Yes, Principal Cook, if you would, come up at this time and introduce our special, uh, student athletes that are with us tonight.
Good evening, uh, Superintendent, good evening, school board members. Thanks for having us here today. It is always wonderful to come before you. I'd like to introduce the James S. Rickards High School basketball team. This is our coach, Coach Eli Bryant. He's concluding his thirteenth year. When you think of seventy-nine teams in six-eight, and we finished second. And it was a great game, we still kinda gonna question that game, thirty-eight free throws. But with that being said, I wanna go ahead and turn it over to our great coach. That's four times in thirteen years, we've been in the finals, and we've captured two state titles. And so we wanna always congratulate Coach Bryant. He's at our school full-time, uh, we really appreciate him and the mentoring he provides for our students. And I have to say this, we have two students that was in the hurricanes of a lifetime, Saint Martin and Saint Martin E. They're on our team as well. Coach Bryant and his staff welcomed those students in. They've taken care of those students all year. Those students could not play, but they've been with us the entire year. That's a contribute to Coach Bryant and his leadership, leading our school and under our great superintendent, Superintendent Hannah. So Coach Bryant?
Good evening. Now very much to add to that, however, I'd like to, on behalf of the parents of these young men, I'd like to thank you for this recognition and, um, introduce my coaching staff. Gentry Sparks, Justin Koffler, Avery Currie, and the team. There you go.
And team.
Thank you very much, uh, we are honored to have finished second. We're disappointed to have finished second, but it's still an honor. Only two teams played for the championship. We look forward to being there again this time next year, being here, being congratulated for the championship.
Great. We look forward to that, too. Can I ask you how many seniors we have on the team?
Six.
Six. But you got a lot of bench, they're ready to go, aren't they?
Yeah, unfortunately, uh, unfortunately, we thought beginning of the season, but we got a chance to play some very young guys. Played two tenth graders some extended minutes, so.
Awesome.
Have experience coming back and youth.
A great representation for Leon County. We're so proud of you guys. I know Ms. Lewis Butler had a few things she wanted to say.
While you're standing, you're a young man, you can stand. Congratulations to you, you're superstars. And you're, you've been awesome in your achievement in making it to the FHS, FHSAA, uh, Boys Basketball State Playoff. We're so proud of you. We're proud of your teamwork, we're proud of your leadership and your commitment. And to the, and I say congratulations to you, all of you. The seniors, as you move to the next level, I want you to make sure you remember the tools. A teamwork that you learn on the Coach Bryant, as well as leadership you learn on the Coach Bryant, as well as commitment you learn on the Coach Bryant. Seniors, as you move to the next level, those are tools that you're needing in life as you move on. I wanted you to come here tonight so we can see you and how good you look, and how awesome you look. We're proud of you.
Yes, we are.
Want to recognize you, and we're gonna take a picture with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. If, uh, do we wanna?
Yeah, real quick, Madam Chair, I just wanna thank you. Uh, thank you, young men, for the way you've represented not only James S. Rickards High School, but Leon, Leon County. I'm, remember, I know the names Sparks and Curry, y'all, y'all fall from the same, cut from the same cloth as your coaches, but, uh, I tell you, you don't realize whether it's, it's Rickards, it was Godbe, it was Lincoln last year. We have some of the best basketball, not only in the state of Florida, I'd say in the nation. Right here in Tallahassee and Leon County, it doesn't get any better than this. And, uh, you should be very proud of your accomplishments as you go to take the next step in life. But remember, you're always, you're student athletes, the student part is always first, the athlete part is always, is always second. So stay focused on your goals, but I just wanna say how much we appreciate the way you've represented this community.
And let me publicly thank Mr. Cook for his support and leadership.
Yeah, Mr. Cook, it couldn't have been done without a good principal. And I, Mr. Cook, I appreciate you, uh, traveling out your business schedule, being there for them, and letting them do what they do. And as alumni, uh, work Miss Austin, we got Mr. Davis there, and Miss Lil. These are people that make very sure that the boys get what they need, and, and make sure that the safety is there, as well as the food is there, and the health thing, so we thank you as well.
The food is important, then, that guy. All right, y'all wanna come on up to?
Yes.
And y'all are gonna have to be back row, I, I know we're not gonna make the back row.
Yeah.
At this time, we just wanna, um, just make mention that, um, the students that are with us have lots of studying to do, get those straight A's going, so as they depart, um, if some of you guys that are outside the room would like to come in, or in the overflow room, um, we'd like to give you a few minutes to come. There's plenty of seats, um, in here, front row, middle row, all over the place.
And the bus driver, Mr. C, thank you.
That's important. Get them all, man, get them all.
Once the seats are full, um, I do wanna tell you that there is an overflow room established with, um, TV viewing, I believe, Chris, or somebody wanna point them in the direction, um, if you'd like to be in the overflow room. We apologize for the, for the lack of seating, but we're very glad you're all here tonight. All right, recognitions, none to date, reports to be heard, district advisory council, none to date. A student district advisory council, none to date. Title-one advisory council, none to date. Uh, world-class schools update, Sue Dick and Laura Rogers are with us tonight from the Tallahassee Greater Chamber of Commerce. We're very glad you're here with us.
Thank you. Um, I'm glad to have Sue Dick, the president of the Greater Tallahassee Chamber of Commerce with me. And, um, we do have a presentation online that we'd like to go ahead and get started. So, I'm not sure about the connection. There we go. Thank you all very much, I'll try to go back and forth between each one. Um, I, thank you very much for meeting with me. We wanted to give you all an update of what World Class Schools has been working on with the district and in the community. And, um, we just really appreciate this partnership. One of the things that we've been trying to focus this past year are three key strategic priority areas. Um, the partnerships that we've nurtured, the student recognition and talent development, and also teacher engagement and enrichment. Um, in our partnerships, um, we have really been focusing on the Lively Technical Center. We're very excited to be able to convene a very systematic approach of the business support for the relationships with the Tallahassee Builders Association, the Association of Building Contractors, and the Chambers Construction Industry Leaders with Lively Technical. Um, and with the program that Shelley Bell is now working on. Um, we've been promoting these, um, programs in the community by having, um, Ms. Bell, um, be a keynote speaker at one of our, um, recent, uh, Professional Women's Forum in fall. And then also representing the chamber on a campus tour at the, um, Lively Program when Congressman Neil Dunn was in town. We're just very glad that we're able to link the school board with the key leaders, um, with information on strategic planning for growth patterns and trends. In regards to the foundation of Leon County Schools, we've been working closely with their, um, executive director, Nick Maddox. Um, we're trying to coordinate at least monthly meetings so that we can, um, get ideas and share information so that we can work together on various, um, volunteer programs and pushing out our different, um, fundraisers and initiatives. Leadership Tallahassee in January reinstated, uh, Education Day, and I was very fortunate to be able to connect with, um, Principal Doug Cook, also with Lively, to be able to promote the curriculum opportunities that, uh, Leon County offers our students in the public schools, and also the opportunities of not necessarily the collegiate track, but also the technical skills and workforce career track. So it was very well received.
That's okay.
And then school safety has been something, um, relatively new. We know that safety is always first, and the mindset for Leon County Schools, and protecting the children because you're, you know, the parents are entrusting their children with the schools. But we were very proud to be able to be at the table with, uh, the school district, the Tallahassee Police Department, and the Sheriff's Department to help with, um, one of the new initiatives that we want to promote with this video that was placed on various social media. And, um, we're hoping that that will help provide information out into the community. The Leon Works, um, is usually scheduled in October. We had a very successful third annual event, and, um, this was able to provide the opportunities for about four hundred students in Leon County that were high school students to be able to see hands-on various businesses. And we are still planning on promoting that and having another event in October. And the Best and Brightest Awards, um, we're very excited to be able to recognize a hundred and fifty-eight high school seniors in the Leon County public and private schools. And also, we have, uh, encouraged the, uh, programs down into the eighth grade with the eighth grade essay contest. And of course, everyone is invited to attend the big award ceremony, which is May sixteenth, at Ruby Diamond Concert Hall. And our own superintendent will be the keynote speaker.
Desperate, huh?
No, we're not, you're on our calendar. So, and then, um, the, the next program is, that we're involved in with the students is the Capital Health Plan, the CHP Champions, in our thirteenth year. Just in Leon County, we're able to reach ten thousand students to help address the obesity issues that we're always trying to address. And the next part is the, uh, teacher engagement and recruitment. We helped host the second annual welcome new teacher reception. We're working with, um, the school district in order to encourage and appreciate those new teachers so that we can let them know that the community wants them to stay here and to stay being a, a teacher. So we're hoping that will address the concerns that, um, we don't have enough of the skilled teachers and that they love being in Leon County. Um, we're also partnering with the Superintendent Teacher Leader Academy. We're very proud that, um, we're able to bring sponsors to help enrich those different programs for that three-days, um, uh, academy. And, um, we're also very active with the Partners in Excellence and Volunteer Recognition Program held last Friday, and, uh, it's, it's a great way to be able to. Thank you all very much for, uh, volunteers help drive our country's progress. And I appreciate the time that you give to, um, allow us to come into the schools, assist the students, and help build our workforce in, in the chamber opportunities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura, and Sue, both for being here. We're so, we're so grateful, I, we had the, um, volunteer mentor partner breakfast the other morning. And without the support of our chamber, um, in fact, I spoke very bluntly about, um, the flaws that we have, you know, in our schools, as all schools do, but yet your members, the chamber, they dig in, and they commit themselves to our schools, and they give their time, their resources, their talents, and they make our schools a better place. And they wouldn't do that without the support of the chamber as an, as an entire body. So, um, thank you for everything you do, I'm, I'm, I'm a big fan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, uh, Word of South, and, oh, please, you're gonna have to just go ahead and forgive me now. Sue?
Sarah.
Sarah? Mar- I was so busy looking at the last name, I.
It's okay.
Marcia Salt?
You know, a lot of people guessed Marcia Salt. My last name is pronounced like the name Marcia, and the word so. But my students at TCC just call me Ms. M.
Okay. Well, I apologize, we're glad you're here, Ms. M, Word of South.
Thank you, thanks for having me. Uh, I do serve as the director for the Word of South Festival. I'm here tonight to just say thank you so much to Leon County Schools for supporting our festival. Chris Petley especially has been key in meeting with us and strategizing how to get the words to students and families about our festival, which is this weekend. So all events Saturday and Sunday are free at Cascades Park. Um, we do have some spots left, if any of you would like to introduce an author or a musician, you can just email us and let us know. And this box has your invitations and everything you need for the weekend. All right, any questions? Anyone you're dying to see that you need to know what time they're gonna be on?
Yes, are the Currys gonna be there this year?
The Currys are not gonna be there this year, they had a scheduling conflict, I know, we were bummed, too.
So great, there's so many other great people, though, um, we, I think this is an amazing opportunity for Tallahassee, um, and for to highlight Cascades Park and the growth that's going on. This is only going to grow and get bigger, um, I attend this every year, and.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, my gosh, and Mark Mushing, which, what act do you wanna introduce? So he's, um, we're just so appreciative that we have this in Tallahassee. This is the kind of festival that, you know, that, that people come to from other areas, they come to Tallahassee just for this.
That's what we hope. And this year, we have also partnered with Early Learning Coalition, and every kid who comes Saturday gets a free book. We're very excited about that.
Thank you, Ms. M, we appreciate you. Um, Water Quality Report, LaRoderick McLean.
Good evening, Mr. Superintendent, um, Madam Chair, board members, Attorney Williams. I wanna give you, um, an update on our water quality efforts for the spring two thousand and eighteen. The results we've taken from our last samples, um, at all of our middle schools and high schools were less than ten parts per billion in all eighty-six fixtures, including the samples we collected in the spring at Cobb and Leon. We did have one sample at the, uh, main service backflow preventer at Robb that did exceed ten parts per billion. However, it did not exceed the EPA and CDC fifteen parts per billion recommended action level. As you know, we've been following the US EPA guidelines for sample collection, where we're abandoning the fixture at least eight to twelve hours prior to collecting two hundred and fifty milliliters of the first draw of water. And all of our results can be seen on our website under the, um, Water Quality Program Quick Link. Back in February two thousand, I'm sorry, back in February thirteenth, sorry, this year, we met with Dr. Axarod, Dr. Salters, um, our consultant, uh, Chris Hill, and Ms. Woods. And we wanted to discuss, uh, and review our water quality program and discuss some efforts that we can share between each other. The meeting was very productive, very informative. We were able to advise the doctors of our ongoing preventative maintenance efforts, our capital projects, our standards and design, along with our bi-weekly flushing. Um, these ongoing efforts include the replacement of our drinking fountains with filtered water fountains, installation of a three-filter, a three-stage filtration system in all of our kitchen cooking areas, use of specific materials, upgrades for campus water systems, including low lead solder, propress fittings, and braided, uh, piping on existing classroom bubblers. We're currently repiping the underground water services at Cobb, NIMs, and Riley. And as part of our preventative maintenance efforts, we're also replacing the aerators in all of our sinks. As a result of our meeting, in direction from our water quality consultant and suggestion from Ms. Woods, we proposed to lower our action, um, level down to ten parts per billion, which is five parts below the CDC and the US EPA recommendations. As you're aware, our parts per billion action level is a point in where we take action to address any particular fixture that exceed that level. This spring, we're looking to concentrate our efforts in the pre-K, kindergarten, first and second grade of all of our classroom areas. And I asked Mr. Green to come up, uh, Mr. Green, uh, is our coordinator of, um, environment health and safety, and I wanted him to get recognized for his dedication and hard work, for his, uh, helping maintain the quality of the drinking water for our faculty, staff, and students. He's responsible for collecting the samples, recording the results, and working with our maintenance department to address any fixtures where they may exceed this action level.
That's Mr. Green in the blue shirt back there?
Yes, ma'am.
He's acting, he's acting shy. So we met, what, Rod, about two months ago, after you met with, uh, Ms. Wood and Dr. Axarod, and talked about reducing even going to the, to the ten, uh, parts per billion?
Correct.
As opposed to the fifteen, and, uh, we're gonna pull that off. To say we're not only gonna stop at the fifteen, we're gonna even take a higher standard to go to ten.
That's correct.
We're hoping we get down to one.
We're, we're working toward that, working toward that.
I just wanted, can I say something?
Yes.
Well, it was a great meeting, I agree, and I, I thought we, um, sort of really came together in a way, instead of being in a, in a adversarial way, to really all work for the same purpose of having the squeaky clean water in our schools, and I really appreciate the work you're doing, and you and Carl, and, um, anyway, I think we're really on a great road, and we're about, I think we're the only county in the state doing this, so.
The only county in the state that's doing that, that's correct.
I think we should all be very proud that we have this water quality going, and that we're very aware of it, and that, you know, hope that we can be the model for the state, because it's really important.
It is, thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for everything, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
No questions.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, before we have a motion for the consent agenda, I just wanna note to the public, we had agenda review yesterday. Board had a chance to ask questions or discuss anything that was on the agenda pertinent. And we did that for many hours yesterday, so do I have a motion to approve consent?
You do, Madam Chair, I've moved the consent agenda.
Second? Moved by Ms. Bowen, second by Ms. Wood, all in favor? Aye. Denied? Opposed? Passes unanimously, thank you. Um, where are we? Brings us down to eighteen point oh one. Superintendent recommends approval of the Edmentum Credit Retrieval Renewal for eighteen nineteen. Do we have, we, yes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Member, Superintendent Hannah, before you, for consideration this evening is the Edmentum Credit Retrieval Renewal. This is the program that we use, otherwise known as Plato, that's to be used for credit recovery, usually at our secondary level, particularly at our high school level.
Move approval. Thank you, moved by Ms. Rasmussen, second by Louis Butler, all in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Eighteen point oh two, Superintendent recommends approval of the semi-annual construction report, Mr. Albritton.
Okay, eighteen oh two is the semi-annual construction part, report. And I've, I have given you all information in your packages of projects that were in process, that are completed, and that are, are future projects and ongoing. Currently, our two large projects are Rickards, the thirty, not to exceed thirty million, and Fairview, not to exceed twenty million. We have two projects that are going on right now, at, that are, uh, dining cafeteria expansion projects at Chairs in Springwood. And we have several other site improvements at WT Moore and at Woodville. And at Kate Sullivan, we've got, uh, window replacement project going on. Those are our major projects, we have other smaller projects, save time, I'll, but, any questions?
Okay.
None?
No?
I move the Superintendent's recommendation.
Second.
Moved by Bowen, second by Louis Butler, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
May have noticed one of those on the Tharp Street corridor, Ms. Bowen, is.
Yes, I do.
Augusta Raw Middle School, we're putting up a beautiful canopy that would be.
Yes.
Yeah, very excited about that project to, uh, add a little, uh, spice to that campus.
But of course. Good job.
All right, eighteen point oh three, adoption of science instructional materials.
Good evening, School Board Members, Madam Chair, Superintendent Hannah, before you, this evening is the adoption of the science instructional materials. This is the culmination of a public process by which we are adopting for the first time in many years, science materials for students in grades K through twelve.
And we had a great presentation, I saw, a couple of times about this material, and I think we're all very grateful that it's gonna be consistent across the district for those classes that are in, offered in every school, biology, chemistry. No school will be different, or teaching out of any book, different than any other schools, is that correct?
That's correct.
I believe we're all on board for that, so. Move approval.
An inclusive selection process involving many different perspectives, including science teachers across the district. So thank you for that and the transparency that that included.
All right, do I have a second?
You do.
And thank you for allowing the teacher to have input.
Absolutely, always. Moved by Louis Butler, second by Bowen, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, eighteen point oh four is a construction item, I'm gonna let Mr. Albritton read that one.
Eighteen oh four is a recommendation for Albritton and Williams as the construction manager at risk at WT Moore Elementary School. It's for site improvements, drainage, and playfield project. Their guaranteed maximum price is one million nine hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-eight cent.
Move the approval.
Second, moved by Bowen, second by Rasmussen, all in favor? Opposed? Passes unanimously.
If I may, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Justin, you got away before, stand up real quick, I'd like to recognize Justin Williamson, who was very instrumental in putting together this science adoption. So Justin, thank you so much for all of your hard work. We have, I'm really excited about our, uh, our plan moving forward. We added half a million dollars a year out of our general fund, eliminating some waste, uh, out here and pushing those dollars down to the classroom, like we, uh, promised, to identify this year science and then next year moving towards, you know, English and math adoption. So we're excited about the plan we have moving forward, but it went, a lot of hard work with, uh, with Jillian and Justin and their, and their staff.
I think, Madam Chair, if I might, Justin, your presentation two weeks ago was so thorough that you, you adequately addressed all of the questions and concerns, and the process was so well-vetted that that's why you got off easy tonight, but, uh, we appreciate. But we appreciate your hard work.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ditto.
All right, before we move on to 18.05 and 18.06, which are both of our charter school applications, independent of each other, we just want to take a few minutes to, I just want to, we had much discussion till late into the evening last night on both of these items and every point of view and lots of opinions. And so what we would like to do tonight is we want to ask, before we present these items, we want to ask Bev Owens to come up and give some groundwork that she gave yesterday. No?
Well, it's your, well, it's your pleasure. I would like, if you want to take the speakers first to this item?
We can do that. We can go speakers first, yep. Okay, so I think what we had decided yesterday, we wanted just some statistical information from Ms. Owen, yes, that we received yesterday, and then kind of let the superintendent give his opinion. And we want to hear from the speakers as well. I will ask the speakers to respect three minutes. Where, that doesn't, that's regardless of topic, regardless of any other, any other issue. We're going to hold you to three minutes and ask that you respect that. We have a lot of speakers who filled out a card for both items. I would ask that you, if you're speaking to one school specifically, you would speak to that item. If you have something that blankets the entire subject, you only speak once. If you feel adamant about speaking twice, that is your right to do so. So, and then we will have the discussion, so. All right, 18.05 is the Plato Academy Charter School Application. And I believe we'll go to speakers first. Is that where we decided? Yes?
All right, Madam Chair, the first speaker, Jennings Lawton De Priest. If you could come up, give us your name, address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you for having me. My name is Jennings Lawton De Priest. I live at 4294 Avon Park Circle out in Southwood. That's 32311. I'm not a parent, I'm not a union member, I'm not a teacher, I'm not a member of the board of either of these charter schools, but I'm a local businessman and I care deeply about the education quality in this county. I myself am the product of school choice. I grew up in district-operated schools of choice down in Polk County. And I can't thank the teachers and the administrators of those schools enough for getting me to where I am today. The future of our education systems is school choice. School choice is the way that we can move forward. It's the way that we can innovate, and it's the way that we can improve our school systems for every single student. Originally, it seemed like the board and the superintendent might have been concerned about funding. But the desire to move forward with potentially blocking these two schools, regardless of the cost to the board to fight the appeals, made me question that. And at the end of the day, this is politics and this is about power. Those of us in green and our friends in red, we all want the same thing. We want a high-quality education for every single student. Leon County Schools even list under equity one of our core values, closing the achievement gap. The data are clear, and my friends in red might even agree with me on this. The way we close the achievement gap is by empowering teachers, and that's what charter schools do. They take power away from the district, which is why some members of the board might oppose that. But at the end of the day, empowering teachers is the only way to move forward. It's the only way to take care of our kids. 1022.3, the charter school statutes for the state of Florida give teachers and parents a lot of power. And that can be scary for a school board, and I understand that. It can be scary to sit here and approve two charter schools and realize that in charter school statute, we have the power for teachers to go in and convert a public school into a public charter school and take that power back.
30 seconds.
I would ask that you all prove me wrong. Prove that this isn't about power and support and approve both of the schools tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next speaker is Beth Overholt.
Can I just say for the record that my blouse is orange? And I don't think we need to be taking sides.
Please give us your name and address. For the record, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Beth Overholt with Common Ground. My address is 4130 Faulkner Lane. I also live in Southwood. I'm also a product of public schools and school choice down in Sarasota County. Superintendent Hannah is standing up for public schools by recommending the rejection of these two charter schools, and I stand with the superintendent. The Department of Education only allows public schools to build new schools and expand schools based on enrollment numbers. There are only so many K-12 students in Leon County. The reason behind this approval from DOE is to use our tax dollars in an efficient way. By adding these new charter schools when public schools have plenty of seats for students is wasting our tax dollars. Each public, each school has fixed costs with lights, air conditioning, and staff. Adding more schools will further strain our tax dollars. If you open two new charter schools per year, when does it end? Listening yesterday to the review at the charter school application, these two charter schools will not be providing anything innovative. Each of these types of learning is already being done by our public schools. Even the charter or the character development is done in public schools through our marking period assembly. Each, the only thing different is the requirement of parents to volunteer. If our public schools could ask for the same requirement, our schools would look very different. Charter schools were supposed to provide a better education for less money. The results say that the charter schools are doing the same or worse than public schools and only want more money. I hope that Leon County School Board will stand up to the charter expansion and send a message to our legislature. Other school districts are watching and struggle with the same issue. As Chair Striplin said yesterday, quote, "Until school boards rise up and make a statement for change in the best interests of public education, this will keep going on," end quote. Join with Superintendent Hannah's brave leadership in protecting public schools. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next speaker is Scott Mazur. Please give us your name, address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Scott Mazur. I'm president of Leon Classroom Teachers Association. My address is 3319 Dartmoor Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. The definition of public is as follows. Affecting all the people in an area, being the service of the community relating to the people in general, meaning universal, relating to community interest as opposed to private affairs, devoted to the general welfare humanitarian, accessible to or shared by all members of the community. This is the fundamental issue that we're discussing and you are voting on today, the universal welfare of our community. We say that we are here to discuss choice. Well, choice is opportunity. And Leon County Schools has an obligation to provide opportunity and choice to all public school students, not some. In a conversation that I had this year with Representative Halsey Bishir, one of the things that he said that it was very difficult, that's very complicated, I said, it's not that difficult. I said, money is not the answer, but money provides opportunity. And opportunity is choice. I would love to go to Hawaii. I don't have the opportunity because I don't have the funds. I'm sure it would be enriching and give me a new experience. But as a teacher that was mentor of mine once said, when my daughter was born, you need to provide as many opportunities of the same situation in a lot of different ways. So go to the beach when it's sunny, go to the beach when it's cold, go to the beach when it's rainy, go to a northeastern beach, go to Hawaii, go all these different beaches, wherever is that you can go because it allows for divergent thinking. One of the things that we're talking about today is providing opportunity for all kids. And one of the things that we did was we brought some teachers to the legislature and we were told that it is opportunity for all, it's choice. But we have some parents that work three jobs that don't have the ability in either money or time to get to these charter schools. So the opportunity isn't for all at that point in time. Some of the things that are going in our school system right now, okay? Opportunity, athletics. My daughter is a club player, okay, one of them. We had, three years ago, we had to split up the club playing because our Southside Schools didn't have the opportunity to be a part of those clubs for financial reasons. So we had kids that were club level playing against other club-level kids and other ones that weren't didn't have that opportunity. So they have the choice to go do club, but they can't do it because they don't have that opportunity. We have public schools extracurricular classes. I remember when we didn't pay for anything. I pay a significant amount for the thing, how many?
30.
Oh, thanks. For, for drama and other things for my students. Not every parent can do that. We've got kids that are 30 deep in our arts programs that are provided, that are not funded by the state. It goes up to 37 when a teacher is absent. So here's the bottom line. Your constitutional officer is elected by the public to represent the public. You're elected to provide accountability of our taxpayer dollars to ensure all students within Leon County receive the best
Time.
possible education that they can in our traditional public schools. We ask you to vote now. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Madam Chair, the next speaker is Sean Arnold. Please give us your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening, Madam Board, Chair, and members of the board. My name is Sean Arnold. I'm counsel to Plato Academy Charter Schools. I've had the pleasure of representing Plato schools across the state for the last four years.
Address?
Apologize, 6279 Dupont Station Court, Jacksonville 32257. Today, you have before you the, not only this charter school, but as well as the second one involving Tallahassee Classical. You, there was a lot of discussion about this and a lot of conversation. Ms. McKinney, Williams, and I completely agree as to what is the standard that is before you. And that is, the legal standard is whether there is good cause to deny the applications. Based upon the review of the excellent applications before you, I don't see that there is good cause to deny it. And this standard is set forth not only in statute, but it has been set forth in case law in many cases, including in case of Osceola versus UCP from 2007. In that case, in that presentation by Osceola, they stated that there was not funds in the school district to support bringing the charter schools in. In that instance, the court expressly rejected that. So this argument has been, has been brought forth in school districts in the past and has been rejected and has been not raised in any district of which we practice. My wife and I represent about 120 charter schools across the state and we practice in approximately 30 locations, 30 counties. There is nobody, I think, in a green shirt or a red shirt who's here tonight who believes that school districts should be restricted in the way that they are under Florida statute from expanding, from having additional abilities to expand. But laws come from the worst-case scenarios. They come from situations where schools have, where school districts have overbuilt or overspent on, on these things. I don't think that this is a, that this is the forum to have a public discuss, or to have a discussion outside of the application process. And that's what concerns me. I don't want to see us end up in a situation where we have to fight this out in a courtroom over something that we think the law is pretty well settled. If there had been findings by the, by the review committee of this application that said that this, that there is good cause, then that would be a discussion we could have. But there are laws that are set forth here and there are laws that we have to follow. And if there are midterm elections this year, this is the 20-year anniversary of the constitutional revision. If you have discussions or have issues with the status of the law, you live in the city where the laws are made and would ask that you participate in that process. I advise my clients that if
30 seconds.
if you don't like the law, then work for change. And we've done that in situations where we, where we disagree with the law and we had change made. But I never, ever advise a client not to follow the law. I think in this instance, I would respectfully submit that the law requires you in this instance to approve the application because the professionals have reviewed it and there is not good cause in the record before you to deny the application. Thank you.
Mr. Madam Chair. Mr. Arnold, would you elaborate just briefly the loss, the case law that you mentioned, Osceola versus UCP? What is UCP?
It's United Cervel Policy. It's a client of ours in the Orlando area that we've represented for quite a while. And Ms. Rasmussen, I'm happy to send you that case law
Thank you.
if you're, and send you the citation if you wish.
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Madam Chair, next speaker is Shari Gwanter, Gwanter, I'm sorry. If you could please give us your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Her shirt is red. My name is Shari Gwanter. I live at 2213 Pontiac Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. I am a public school teacher. I work for Leon County Schools. I have been teaching in Title I kindergarten for 16 years and can't imagine teaching anything else or anywhere else. I choose to be there and I choose to stay there in Title I. Let me start by saying that I support my public schools with my heart and soul. And today is not the first time or the last time that I will stand up to advocate for public schools. Next, let me say that I do support choice. Let me be clear about that. But I support public schools, I support public libraries, I support public parks. And I believe that public money needs to remain with those public entities. I am proud of our public schools. Charters have the right to open and they have the right to compete with our public schools. But I don't believe that it should be by draining the public school funds. Let them run forward, do well, show that they offer a different choice, and let our families make that choice to go there on their own. Let's put public school money back into public schools and stop the drain of our resources. Let's turn the conversation back to how we can improve the systems that are currently in place that serve our children and the funds that we have to work with in our district that are constantly being pecked at, drained, and mandated without any funds. Let's find some different ways to support each other, charters and public schools together. Let's build bridges without draining resources and without fueling this charter school expansion. I ask my public school board to deny these petitions for both of these charter schools and to support my boss's recommendation, Superintendent Rocky Hannah, to support his recommendation, to say no and to stand up and say no. Please vote no. Thank you.
Madam Chair, next speaker is Kelly Stannard. If you could give us your name and address, you have three minutes.
Madam Chair, Superintendent, and Board Members, my name is Kelly Stannard. My address is 9895 Buck Point Road, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm going to just speak today on behalf of my sister, Shannon Pash. And so I'm just going to read you her letter. "Good evening. I apologize for my absence for this meeting. However, the third-grade students are taking the FSA for the first time and I needed to be with them. They have been working so incredibly hard this year and they need their support system." My name is Shannon Pash, that's my sister, and I am a Tallahassee native. I was born and raised here and didn't move away until after I graduated college. My husband's work took us away for a short time, but we are ready and eager to come home. I absolutely loved growing up in Tallahassee and I cannot think of a better place for my daughter to grow up as well. I have had many friends ask me about Plato Academy and after having learned more about the school, they have expressed their desire to have us come to Tallahassee. Bringing Plato Academy to Tallahassee has nothing to do with the purpose of expansion in the interest of the school and it has everything to do with meeting a need in the community. I've had the privilege of working at Plato Academy for the last seven years and I want to be able to provide the community of Tallahassee the choice to attend Plato Academy. We are dedicated to our students and our families and we believe that every child can learn and grow when given the opportunity. As educators, we all know that the, that education isn't one-size-fits-all. We are simply wanting the chance to offer choices to parents and show them how we have helped our students become so successful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, next speaker, Marie Claire Lehman. Please give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent. My name is Marie Claire Lehman. I live at 1911 Wahala Court, Tallahassee. My children attend Hartsfield Elementary and Rickards High School. And we definitely chose to send them at those, chose to send them at those schools. I know that you've read the application diligently and I know that the charter school revision or review committee worked very hard on reviewing these thorough applications. And I know that you understand the requirements that are set out in the statute. And I know that you've evaluated whether these requirements have been met. And I know that you've thought very carefully about the ramifications of your decision. And I know that you've thought very carefully about the ramifications of your decision, one way or the other. And I recognize that you're in a tough spot because of course, these two companies meet the requirements of the statutory provisions. And it's no surprise because these provisions were put in place by the very same people that sponsor and support this, these and similar applications. But you're also, but, but thinking about these applications in the narrow statute, the narrowness of these statutory provisions is where I, where I think that we are making a mistake. Because you're also aware that by approving these charters, you'd be going against your overarching responsibility as school board members to ensure the efficient operations and general improvement of the district school system, which is also a requirement of the statute. And I know, because I've been here often, that you're acutely aware that many Leon County schools and students are struggling due to lack of funding, increased levels and concentration of poverty, the resegregation of our schools and the tremendous pressure to cater to the almighty school grade too often at the expense of teaching and learning. And you have worked continuously and very hard to find ways to address these issues. You know that a huge number of students, especially on the south side, are counting on you to address these issues. But approving these charters will do nothing to fix these issues. In fact, according to the trends that we see in other schools from these same brands already established in other districts, their presence in our education landscape will only exacerbate these problems. As Superintendent Hannah has indicated, we have no need for these schools and accepting them will cause our education dollars to be spread even more thinly. Accepting them will increase the number of students that are, that are likely to attend intensely segregated schools. Accepting them will further concentrate poverty. Accepting them will give-
Thirty seconds.
-will give choice to few and make it much more difficult for the district to sustain and create opportunity for the many. My daughter goes to Rickards and a beloved class there is the Latin class. So will this opportunity be lost? It would be cruelly ironic. Public education is a collective good. Choice is inherently individual. Your job is to protect the public good and to ensure that all Leon County students have equitable access to quality education and we cannot seek both equality and advantage at the same time.
Time.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, next speaker is Matt Gunderson. You could give us your name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Hannah, my name is Matthew Gunderson and I reside at five-four-one-seven Clouds Peak Drive, Tampa, Florida, three-three-five-five-eight. Thank you all for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the nonprofit Volunteer Board at Plato Academy Schools. This is my twenty-first year working in, in education. I am the principal of Plato Academy Tampa and I've been involved in school improvement and quality assurance with Plato Academy for six years. I'm here on behalf of all our educators who are currently focused on administering the FSA. I'm here on behalf of our currently enrolled students and the more than seven thousand students who are on our waitlist in the Tampa Bay area. More importantly, I'm here on behalf of all the parents who have reached out to Plato Academy over the years and asked us to open a school here in Leon County. While Leon County is a great school district, it does not offer parents the range of choice that one might expect a district as enlightened as this one is. I'm here representing a viable and proven educational choice for families. Plato Academy has a proven track record of success at multiple locations. We serve diverse students with unique needs. We strive to help them all find the genius within each of them and give them the educational foundation strong enough to support the loftiest of dreams. Many here might be wondering, what is Plato Academy all about? Plato Academy parents and prospective parents will tell you that we are small K-through-eight schools that teach with high academic and behavioral expectations for all students. Plato Academy educates the whole child. Our students wear uniforms, take lessons in Greek daily and enjoy PE, music and art. We have excellent character education programs and we were STEM schools before that word became a buzzword in education circles. Most of all, we intend to be a real community for our students and their parents. Plato Academy values its teachers and pays them competitively or better than the district pay scale and gives them the autonomy in the classroom to do what is best for their students. Most importantly, we treat our students the way we want to be treated, with respect and high expectations. Tonight doesn't have to be about public schools versus charter schools. Tonight should be about doing what's best for Leon County students, children and families. Plato Academy Schools are the highest performing group of charter schools in the state of Florida. Historically, eighty percent of our students perform at grade level or above, forty percent higher than the state average year after year. Our minority, ESE, ELL and economically disadvantaged students have performed one-hundred-and-one percent better than their traditional, their peers in traditional public schools. Plato Academy has submitted, in accordance with state statute, a high-performing replication application based on the excellent school program operating at Plato Academy Palm Harbor, which continuously ranks in the top three of Pinellas County's one-hundred-and-eighteen schools and continuously in the top five percent of all schools in the state of Florida. For four of those years, Plato Academy Palm Harbor-
Time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gunderson. Madam Chair.
Yes.
Is there going to be an opportunity to ask questions of the official representative of this applicant? And I don't know if that's Mr. Gunderson or his counsel.
If you would like to ask a question, I would say-
I don't know if now is the time.
I would say let's do it now, but let's keep it too short. This is not a chance to elaborate on your three minutes. This is maybe a yes or a no or a number.
Well, he said several things that gave me pause and I was just curious. What do you, what do you mean that we, for a, a school district of our size or our caliber, we don't offer the range of choice you would expect? What did that mean exactly?
There's currently only four charter schools to choose from.
Okay, you mean charter choice, not our own capacity to deliver character education or classical education and so forth, is that right? Okay. And your compensation or better pay for teachers, does that include retirement and insurance? Similar to what we have to offer?
Well, we, we offer 401K plans with matching up to five percent. And in, in this current stock market, the teachers are doing far better than-
This week or last? I'm just kidding.
Right.
Just kidding.
Today?
Just kidding.
If we go by today?
I'm kidding. Okay. Thank you. What, how many students? And you said you're the principal at Palm Harbor?
No, I'm the principal of Plato Academy Tampa.
Plato Academy Tampa.
And I also serve as a, as a director among all the schools.
How many students are at your school?
At my school specifically in Tampa? It's a, it's in its first year and we're only serving eighty students right now.
Eighty? And what percentage are black?
Off the top of my head, I think it's in the range of twelve percent. We, we have close to fifty percent minority students at my school.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, next speaker is Cheryl Collier-Brown. You could give us your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. Cheryl Collier-Brown, two-one-seven Resprive Street, Tallahassee, Florida. I'm here in support of Superintendent Rocky Hannah and all of the teachers within the public school realm. I'm sitting here listening to all of the pros and the cons of the charter schools. I am a product of a public school, taught in a public schools thirty-five and a half years and I'm here begging you, pleading with you to support Superintendent Hannah because I am so, so tired of being drained, funding being drained from our schools. We need the funding to, to enhance our schools, to make our teachers happy when they come to work, provide us with the things we need instead of divvying it out to a charter school who probably don't even have any idea what really goes on within the public schools when we go and work and teach our children. So I'm looking through this audience and saying, well, have they visited Fairview, Carr, Raw? Appalachian, Raleigh. It's a lot of schools that offer the same choices they are trying to give, to take away the funding to provide to their students when it's already in the Leon County public school system. So I'm begging you, pleading with you to support Superintendent Hannah with his decision. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next speaker is Patricia Leedy. Ledry, I'm sorry. Leedy, okay. Please come give us your name, address for the record and you've got three minutes.
Good evening, Board. Superintendent Hannah, thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Patricia Leedy, one-nine-six-one Harriet Drive in Tallahassee, Florida. I understand the concern over funding. Money and funding are in short, short supply. And I also want to say, teachers are amazing. Public school teachers are amazing. And I want to say that none of my personal decisions have been because of the teachers and of, because of public schools. I am the mother of two, two beautiful girl, excuse me, three beautiful girls, two of which are neurodiverse and they require some different educational needs. Programs for their needs do not exist currently in the Leon County District and I toured and I tried and I begged and I pleaded. They don't exist. My choices within our current system is to seek an alternative setting to help them or to force my square pegs into round holes and potentially destroy them. Children are not conforming widgets. Some need a non-traditional setting to thrive. My two school-aged children are in a local nonprofit charter founded by local educators. Deep roots in our community. Twenty years later, twenty years of success, this nonprofit has two schools with A ratings. Moving on to Tallahassee Classical, Tallahassee Classical School was written by a team of locals, very highly educated professionals who saw a need in our community. They saw a need in a drive for classical education in this community and they've gone out and wrote it. I urge you to consider approving Tallahassee Classical School into the Leon County School District. Thank you.
That's a quick question.
I have a, I have a question as well.
Quick question. You are thinking that the type of education that School for Arts and Sciences offers is similar to that which Classical is going to offer?
No. I'm totally aware they are completely in separate educations. But some children need different settings.
Right.
Some need a setting of SASS and some need, could require a setting of POSSIBLE.
Okay. I thought you were talking about your two children. Because my other question was going to be, tell, help us understand what, what it is we aren't providing that your daughters needed. And I do agree with you that not one size does not fit all. All of our children are different.
To be, in my very specific situation, my oldest daughter needs a positive social, emotional learning curriculum that teaches executive function use skills. And I toured my home district school, it did not have it. My daughter, my baby daughter, has significant oral motor delays and I have been working with early steps and everyone, I've been told, her biggest issue is feeding. Those programs don't exist in our district. I'm not saying they exist at SASS, but I'm having to find an alternative setting because she can, she can talk, she can walk, but she has a hard time feeding herself. She has significant oral motor delays up here. Feeding may be, I was told, feeding is not an educational skill that relates to our success.
Okay, I, I'd love to talk to you about this.
No, I'm so sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. No apology. It was, I was asking. Sorry.
All right. Madam Chair, next speaker, Bill Maddox. Can you give us your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
My name is Bill Maddox. I live at five-oh-three Beard Street here in Tallahassee. I am the graduate of a public school, as is my wife, as are far, all four of our children. My mother taught in a public school, one of my sisters did as well. If you have any doubts about my public school cred, let me just say this. I currently live in the home that Kate Sullivan used to live in. Having said that, I am here today as one who supports the charter school applications that are before you and that wants you to know that I want my tax dollars to be used for any families who wish to go to such schools. And to help you understand why I have come to this opinion, let me tell you a little story about something that happened to me last week. Last week I went to the dedication of the Smokey Hollow Barber Shop down, that the Riley House hosted. And there, as part of the ceremonies, a young sixth grader gave an incredible speech, well-written, well-delivered. Afterwards, I was so impressed that I went and spoke with her and her family. And I just, as we were talking, I said, hey, out of curiosity, where do you go to school? And she mentioned that she goes to one of the charter schools here in our town. Now, when her parents enrolled her in a charter school, they weren't doing anything that was bad or that was wrong or that was un-American. They were just trying to do what I think all of us as parents want to do, which is to do right by our kids and to give them the very best opportunities that they can. And I think that as I look at some and talk to some of these parents that are wanting to enroll their kids in these new opportunities, I think that's what's motivating them. They aren't trying to shame the public schools because let's face it, no school, it is, it is horribly unfair to expect any school to be able to serve well every single child that is zoned for that school. I mean, even Harvard has kids that transfer to other schools. So I would urge you to, to support these applications and part of the reason that I do so is because of something that I learned from watching the example of Rocky Hannah when my son was a student at Leon High. One of the things that impressed me greatly about you, Rocky, is that you cared deeply, I mean passionately, about your school. But even more than that, you cared deeply and passionately about your students. And I would submit that for those of us who have elected you, yes, we know that the sign there says Leon County Schools, but we really want you to represent not just the schools, but the students, all the students, even those who may wish to go to schools that we may not wish for them to go to if they were, or, or that we wouldn't send our own kids to. And finally, let me just say that I not only think you ought to support these applications, but that you ought to give that Bloxham School Building where Kate Sullivan once taught over to one or both of these schools because there would be nothing that would make me happier than to see the school where she once taught now filled with schoolchildren from all corners of our city, south side, north side, east and west side-
Thank you.
-studying there. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Can I address real quick the, if I may, the Madam Chair, the, the issue of the Bloxham Building? So the Bloxham Building was turned over. My grandmother actually went to school there. It was a Carolyn Bavard Grammar School back in the nineteen thirties and it was turned over to the state. They closed the, the, the school down because they showed growth in Leon County was to the north and to the east back in the late nineteen thirties. And here we are still today, growth, the majority of growth in Leon County is to the north and to the east. But that building was turned into an office complex, to an office building and was just recently turned back over to the Leon County School System. We don't own the property. The state still owns the property. And to, and I've been in it because I thought the same thing that you did. Wouldn't it be great to turn it back into a school? But it would take millions and millions of dollars to get it back into- No, it is. It's, it's, a lot of people have eyes on that facility.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker.
Madam Chair, Delatree Hollinger. Could you come give us your name and address? You have three minutes.
Madam Chair, Mrs. Superintendent, Delatree Hollinger, seven-one-nine Resprive Street. I'm privileged to serve as president of the Tallahassee branch of the NAACP and on behalf of our executive committee, in twenty-sixteen, the NAACP National Convention delegates passed and the National Board affirmed a resolution calling for a moratorium on the expansion of charter schools. The Board subsequently convened a task force for quality education, which embarked on a national series of hearings to gather data and diverse perspectives on the state of charter schools and their traditional public school counterparts. Among the items recommended for this position were more equitable and adequate funding for all schools serving students of color. School finance reform is needed. Invest in low-performing schools and schools with significant opportunity to close the achievement gap. Mandate a rigorous authoring and renewal process for charters. And eliminate for-profit charter schools. Board members, you may also recall that the Tallahassee branch of the NAACP supported, along with this board, the construction of a new state-of-the-art public high school on the south side of Tallahassee. This request was denied by the Florida Department of Education citing low enrollment or growth on this side of town and costs, as well as a variety of other factors. I like to support Superintendent Hannah's official position in that regard. Finally, this task force's recommendation was that while high-quality, accountable and accessible charters can contribute to educational opportunity by themselves, even the best charters are not a substitute for more stable, adequate and equitable investments. in public education in the communities that serve our children. And on behalf of our, uh, Executive Committee, we'd like to ask you to deny these requests before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, the remaining, um, speaker cards are specifically addressing eighteen point oh six.
Okay. All right, at this time, um, I would ask Bev Owens if you would come up and, um, maybe just summarize briefly what we discussed yesterday. Superintendent either or, what?
If I understand correctly, you want me to explain the, the committee, what the committee found?
I think so.
And then, and then you can ask me further questions? So we're looking at Plato Academy at this point? And, um, just so that our listening audiences knows that what we do is we receive charter applications according to statute by February first. So we received two applications on February first. Plato Academy was one of those. Once we received the applications, we convene a Charter School Application Review Committee. That committee was made up of seven people who reviewed the entire application, one other review, reviewed the finances. Plato Academy's, uh, application is, is a high-performing replication. They intend to replicate a school that's, um, that has, that's called, that is a high-performing school. DOE actually, um, gives this label to the, to schools based on their, uh, student performance and their, um, financial management. And so, um, we have to, uh, review those a little bit differently than we do other charter school applications. The committee, um, overall, a hundred percent of the committee recommended approval of the Plato Charter Application. And there were twenty-three, um, twenty-two standards that we actually had to look at when we reviewed this application. A hundred pers- uh, twenty-two, twenty, all but one of those, uh, criteria, um, a hundred percent of the reviewers reviewed that, uh, reviewed them perfectly. There were, there were no issues. Um, one of the standards, one reviewer felt like there were some concerns and that was in the area of transportation. And the con- the, the concern was that there, there might be, um, students who would want to go to the charter school, but who could not afford to get to it without any transportation. And so that was, with that, the majority, almost every one of the standards was met in the, in the viewers' and the reviewers', um, minds. So we had to recommend that, um, to Superintendent Hannah, uh, that, uh, we will recommend approval.
Thank you, Bev. Any questions? We had many, many, many questions yesterday for hours, so I think we've questioned, um, Bev out, but if, is there anything additional you'd like to?
I don't know if it should be Bev or our attorney to talk about the, uh, five reasons that a school board can give to not approve. Is that, uh, do you want to do that, Bev, or should you, or do you want to?
Um... Hopefully you can do it or I can do it, it does, it's up to you.
Okay, well, in this instance, we're dealing with Plato, which is a high-performing replication. Um, and in the statute, it, uh, requires when you're, as Bev said, when you're reviewing these applications, you look at all of those factors. For high-performing replications, there's a very high standard that you have to meet in order to, um, sh- support, it, to, in order to... To deny, to support a denial of the application. Because it's a high-performing replication, um, the legislature has determined if they want to replicate that high-performing school that exists somewhere else, then, then they ought to unless you can show a couple of things. One, um, a material misstatement within the application itself, a false statement within the application itself, evidence that something, um, that, that some fact was concealed and not put in the application itself. The level, a- and then, uh, apart from that, it would be another material violation or failure to meet the requirements that are in that evaluation, one of those twenty-two factors. But the, the standard that you're looking at when you're reviewing this is, um, clear and convincing evidence. So that is one of the highest standards, highest legal standards that we have for regular application review. Um, and, and it's a standard that, uh, the...
Should we stick with just high performing?
Yeah, I just want to compare it. Regular standard is a middle-level standard. This standard is an incredibly high standard. So, based on the information that's been provided, um, the committee didn't find any basis for denial. We would have to be able to articulate, want, check off one of those boxes that is specifically articulated in statute to support the denial for the high-performing charter.
They're all written right here on our agenda if anybody's looking for it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Superintendent?
If I may, I want to go ahead and speak to both eighteen oh five and eighteen oh six, if that's okay? And then you can figure out how you want to proceed from there. But first, I want to, if I could just speak to you all directly, since I want to have my back.
Please be on the mic.
Rocky, talk into the mic too, so the, uh, TV audience can...
You can stand behind it.
Yeah, the TV needs the mic.
There we are.
All right. I know some of you may find this hard to believe, but this is, this is not personal at all. And it's not about power. I can promise you that. It's, it's about money. It's about economics and it's about limited resources. It's not at all about the power. And we have a good relationship with our existing charters. And if you all, if, if this goes through and you're approved, I will fight tooth and nail for the children that you serve because at the end of the day, they're our children too. And I, and I get that. But what scares me is I can't figure out the math. And that's why I've made this recommendation. But I can assure you, our relationship with the School of Arts and Sciences, Tallahassee Math and Sciences, I've gone and visited and toured those facilities. Anything we can do to help, we had a situation in one of the charter schools, there was a kid that was on the spectrum that they were having trouble dealing with. And we took that kid back because they were having trouble and it was being very disruptive at that school. So that, that kid's back with us and we will continue to have those relationships with you too. But I just can't make the math work. But I, I, but I do want to say upfront that this is not about power, that, and I'm sure it's not about power with these board members either. All thirty-four thousand of these kids, they're all of our kids. To me, it's an exercise in, in economics. So saying that, having said that, uh, Madam Chair and members of the board, I, I agree that the, uh, Leon County Schools Charter Application Review Committee reviewed these applications using the evaluation instrument developed by the Florida Department of Education. The committee determined that the applications met all the requirements for approval under State Statute 1,002.33 related to applications in review and therefore recommended the approval of charter school applications to me. When I took office in November of 2016, I swore to uphold the Office of Superintendent of Schools to the best of my ability. Well, the best of my ability does not allow for the easy way out or political correctness. I expect, I expect much more of myself and I feel very confident that the people that elected me to this office expect the same. For the last year and a half, I've been committed to making decisions based on sound physical responsibility. Often, these decisions are exercises in economics in what I believe to be sound public policy. Tonight, I am recommending the denial of Plato Academy Charter School and Tallahassee Classical Charter School applications to the Leon County School Board based on good cause. Good cause is a legal term denoting adequate, uh, denoting adequate or substantial grounds or reason to take certain action or to fail to take an action as prescribed by law. Let me read that again. Good cause is a legal term denoting adequate or substantial grounds or reasons to take certain action or fail, or to fail to take an action as prescribed by law. Let me talk briefly about two letters that were sent to the Leon, to Leon County Schools from the Florida Department of Education and four other statutes, and Marie Claire kind of touched on this a little earlier, with, which I believe gives you more than just adequate, but substantial cr- grounds for just cause to approve my recommendations of option one to deny. In a letter dated August fourth of two thousand sixteen, the Florida Department of Education responded to Leon County Schools plant survey request to add additional student stations by building a new school with public tax dollars. In part, the letter reads, "The forecast of student enrollment does not show a need for a, for new school facilities based on growth. That existing facilities have sufficient capacity to serve the projected enrollment. They are satisfactory for instructional use and adequate for educational programs to be, to be delivered for the foreseeable future." A second letter dated November, uh, September ninth, two thousand sixteen reads, "Until student enrollment for Leon County Schools shows a projected level of growth that creates the need for a new school, the Florida Department of Education cannot approve a survey recommendation for building a new school under sections ten thirteen point three one and ten thirteen point three five Florida standards." In the fall of two thousand sixteen, Leon County Schools asked to build a new school with taxpayer dollars. Leon County Schools was denied. In my humble opinion, we were denied for good cause. The Superintendent is mandated under Florida Statute 1,001.51 to approve the establishment of schools as needed to provide adequate educational opportunities for all public school students in Leon County. Let me read that again. The Superintendent is mandated under Florida Statute 1,001.51 to approve the establishment of schools as needed to provide adequate educational opportunities for all public school students in Leon County. A district school board has a duty under 1,001.42 to provide adequate educational facilities for all children without payment of tuition. I have no hesitation whatsoever that we are absolutely meeting this statute and currently providing more than adequate educational facilities for all the public school system in Leon County. Tonight, you are being asked to consider approving not one but two applications for new schools. It is my opinion that your approval of these applications is not the physically responsible thing to do, as it will come at the expense of our traditional public school system. I strongly believe you have adequate and substantial grounds giving you just cause to deny these applications and approve option one. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, everybody, for, for speaking. So I guess it's time for us to discuss and see if we can come up with a decision here. Anybody?
Well, yeah, I, I think it would be helpful, um, without belaboring the point too much, but I do want to address a couple of issues that, or concerns that have come up. I, and I want to try to, for you all, address what may sound like some confusion. We've heard references made to several statutory provisions in 1,001. Those are general or overarching duties and responsibilities of Superintendent and of school board, and several of them were listed. We've also heard, uh, references to provisions, I believe, in, uh, 1,013, maybe dealing with facilities. The legislature enacted 1,001, chapter 1,001, enacted chapter 1,013, enacted chapter 1,002. What we need to, what I want you to try to be thinking about with these statutes is we need to be looking at them in a manner in which, uh, that avoids conflict, that avoids, um, conflicting interpretations. And if it's possible to do so, then we do so. If it's not, then we look at the more specific statute, okay? So, we know that the charter school statute, well, let me back up. We know that you all have been given quite a few overarching duties and, and responsibilities and, and powers in 1,001, as has the Superintendent. We also know that, that the legislature has enacted 1,002 that allows for the authorization of charter schools. And those charter schools are designed to fulfill certain guiding principles and purposes. Um, it's interesting to note that one of those purposes is to expand capacity in districts. Not to address capacity, but to expand capacity. So one could, would read that, or could read that to mean, without regard to what is going on here, the legislature has determined that, that one of the purposes is to expand, okay? Also in 1,002, it expressly lists statutes that charter schools are exempted from. And that's just about every other chapter in the Education Code, with the exception of 1,002.33 and then some, um, provisions dealing with health safety, a, a few other, um, provisions. So I say all of that to say, we can't, or I would caution you all against relying on one statute to the exclusion of another. The charter school statute contains specific language and duties for you all to follow. It's approving, it's reviewing applications, using the application, the evaluation instrument, it's approving or denying those applications.
Thank you. All right, ladies.
Yes.
Thoughts, comments?
Thoughts and comments. Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, um, Attorney Williams. I heard everything you said and that is about as clear as molasses. Quite honestly, but I did hear what you said. I mean, the educational code, the expansion, the, uh, avoiding conflict, just cause, good cause, your cause, my cause. And so all of these terms are being thrown out now. In my mind, this, this continues to be a struggle for me. This is honest, it's a struggle. I feel stuck, I feel caught in the middle, uh, and in a need to make a good decision. And I sit here on this date, April the tenth, fifty years after the assassination, assassination of Martin Luther King, talking about fairness and equitableness in a school system. I sit here thinking about the opinions that I've heard, having been a teacher at some point, having been a child who had to go to segregated schools, thinking about what Martin Luther King stood for and was eventually shot, fell dead for. And tonight, we're still having some of those same kind of discussions about power and economics and good education. And so I'm sitting here thinking, what are the parents of Little Joy Juniors over at Riley, Godby, Rudiger, all those other schools thinking? How do they feel about this? What do they think about having their tax dollars taken and diminishing what it appears to me to be, um, good educational practices and resources for them? So I'm trying to wrap my mind around all of these things. And Mrs. Superintendent, I heard you yesterday and I thought, how dare you say that to us? And you know what? It was all right for you to say that to us because it was not for us, it was for the children. And so I think you and I might be more aligned than, than it's, it looks because I, I want to do the right thing and I, I want to make certain that I know what the right thing is. And so I honestly think that this is a discussion that goes farther than these two groups. I think as a board, we need to have a philosophical discussion about where we are regarding charter schools, period. Because whatever decision we make is going to be there for the long term. So where are we? I think that we really need to continue with our hearing, but at a point in the very near future, I'm going to suggest that we plan a targeted session, okay? A workshop, so that I can be clear on what it is you just said and, and, and what it is we're supposed to be looking at. I, I offer that because that's hon- honestly how I feel. I mean, the time is always right to do what is right. And some of those folk out there, that, well, all of them, have put us in these positions to make the best decisions that we can for them. So have we talked to them about these decisions? Do they know? What, what do we know about what they want from us? Do we care? Isn't it our responsibility? I'm just asking. You know, I, I read and I've heard from some of the, uh, pieces of information in the packet about carpooling. And when a lot of our parents don't even have jobs, peace be with the car, to carpool to get where they need to be. Okay, they get to the bus stop, some of them don't even have a bus stop stop to stop under. So what are we really doing? Where are we going to do with this? I mean, Mrs. Superintendent, when you were talking the other day and I thought, how dare you? Our committee that we set up to take a look at the approval of these, uh, applications, that was ours, I think, wasn't it? Our committee. And they brought back to us, um, the go-ahead to approve. So where does that leave us now? And what, what are we really doing? Who's on first? Who's pitching? Who's catching? Where do we go from here in, in what we're doing? Are we alone in this? Who do we need to call on? Well, if we've got folk out there who are saying, all right, we're all in favor of public schools and, uh, you all go ahead and you all deny these and we go to the charter school court, Ms. Williams, who's going to pay that bill? And how much will that bill be the cost, you know? Who's going to pay for litigation? Are we going to collect monies? I'm, I'm, I just need to get it all out. Are we going to collect monies from the neighbors to help pay these law costs, you know? So if we deny, do we go to jail? Probably not. Uh, I, I mean, but you know where I'm going with this? This is very serious to me. When I think about the resources that we could have in a Riley, in a Barn, in a Godby, When I think about the resources that we could have in a Riley, in a Barn, in a Godby, in a lot of other places, you know? I know what it feels like to have to look at books that somebody else used before they got to me. You follow me? I know what it feels like not to have a counselor, and you need one. So, what are we doing to those people who elected us and put us in these positions to make some good choices? I hear what you're thinking. We don't make laws. That's not my job. Laws are made somewhere else, and that's downtown at the legislature. So, perhaps some people ought to be talking to some other folk about these laws that they want us to now buy into. We make policy. What kind of messages are we sending? And then, in the newspaper, in, in, in February, the segregation of the schools in Leon County again, well, here we go again. You know? When does this stop? Where do we go? Do we really care about our neighbors? Probably not. So, in ten years, when we have not provided a good educational background that can undergird the Little Joy Bowens and the Little Rosans of the world, because there are some little poor Rosans too, you know? What are we going to do and how are we going to be looked at? All of this is real, I'm sorry. I knew exactly where I was going to be this morning at eleven o'clock, Mrs. Superintendent. I was going to say, no, let us go ahead and not do it. That's not where I am right now. I want us to have, oh, hold on. I want us to get good information and make good decisions that will last, so that we don't have to be waffling. You know what I'm saying? And so, that's really where I am, my sisters on the board. And I'm not sure that I'm through yet, so I need to look at my notes to make certain that I am. So, yes, I did feel some constrained by our committee that we have not accepted the recommendation from, okay? There was one other point I wanted to make. It, 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 it could appear to some out there, because it was our committee that brought to us the approval, and if we don't do what our committee says to approve them, then are we changing the rules in the middle of the game? They gave us their best vote. They said, go ahead, they're good. So, now, if we don't approve them, what do we do? Do we make a U-turn and say, well, we've looked at these, these, these applications, and we need to look at them again just to see where we are? I'm just sick and tired of being sick and tired of having to go over and over again, and we're playing with the lives of our students, we're playing with the psychological lives, their sociologic, and yes, their economic needs. We don't make the jobs, I know that. But I feel some strong responsibility for speaking up for the Thorpe Street corridor and all of those schools and students that are without, and our teachers who need raises. And so, Mrs. Superintendent, I want you to have one more chance, you know I've only got one vote, but I want you to have one more chance to show us how this will affect us dollar-wise.
So, if I may, Madam Chair, so, what I tried to do was paint a picture for you that, that showed the scope of the committee and their approval.
Yes.
And then, I went outside of the, of that, of that statute to another statute, to several other statutes, and said that the superintendent is required to approve schools as needed. So, I went outside of, of that group. That group did their job, that committee did their job, they made the recommendation to approve based on that criteria.
Right.
What I have done is given us what I consider to be good cause based on other state statutes and our fiduciary responsibilities and public policy to uphold the interests and the resources of our public school system, not coming at the expense of our other schools. So, yes, I think, and I think I've, I am, in my mind, I've done that, maybe not. Obviously with, obviously with some, I haven't. But what I did was, I took, yes, I understand, the, the committee, the committee made its recommendations, and I went outside and looked at other statutes, which guided me to give me, and hopefully you all, the just cause to make the denial.
So, does that mean that you will not be bringing back to us anymore for any approval of any charter schools ever again?
So, look, I, I feel.
Just deal with this one item tonight.
I feel, I feel like a hypocrite that I'm putting my name on something when I know that at the end of the day, it is draining resources away from our traditional public schools, and there is only so much money. It's, it's about money, and it's about economics, and it's about resources. And yes, that Latin class at Kate Sullivan, or the, the other position you wanted, Gillian, yeah, those are going to have to go. Something's going to give. At some point, there's going to be a tipping point. Plato has once, had, had one school, now they have six schools in Pinellas County. I, I do not feel comfortable putting my name on it. Department, they appealed to the Florida Department of Education, and DOE goes to the state board, and they approve them, we'll welcome them with open arms. But Rocky Hanna does not feel comfortable supporting a program that he believes at the end of the day is going to be detrimental to all of us, traditional and, and private.
Thank you. Do you want to just go down the line, Ms. Rasmussen? Thank you for your thoughts, Ms. Bowen. I believe you've been listening to Reverend Holmes an awful lot.
I sure hope so.
And that choir, I can hear, I can hear the, it's coming.
And, and, and the constituents of District Five.
I feel it, I feel it.
I, I have to say that, that's why we were elected here.
That's what you're here for. Um, Ms. Rasm, uh, Ms. Wood?
I'm next, okay. This is one of those things that's really giving me heartburn. Because I really hear what you're saying Superintendent, and I also hear what our attorney's saying, and they're in conflict, honestly. We have, you know, we have a, an application, and I'm just, I'm going to talk about Plato for a minute, because that's the one we're discussing really. Here's the application. They, you know, did a very thorough job, and I've got a lot of things dog-eared on here because I spent the weekend reading the darn thing. The thing that struck me about the application, well, the thing I want the public to know is that, I think the gentleman mentioned earlier, the attorney who's here, said, you know, when people don't like something or something goes wrong, they make another law. Well, that's what has basically happened with charter schools. Because every time a district has said, no because of this, the next year, the law got changed to say, you can't say no to that. And so, the reason that the committee filled out this, you know, big thick sheet and said yes, is because it's a formula. If you answer this question in this way, and you say you're going to do this or that, they have to hit the checkbox, met, met the requirement. And so, we're, we're sort of in a box, and particularly, we're in a box because of the, the criteria on a high-performing school. What, what we have to give cause that relates to this, is my understanding of what the attorney has said, we can't go to another statute, we have to say, one of these five reasons are the reasons we would turn this down. Now, you know, I don't mind having more discussion about that, because, and I don't mind not deciding tonight, and I'll bring that up later. The thing that strikes me about the Plato application is there's not one local person here advocating for it. We had a sister for the principal, and I understand she's teaching, but, you know, one thing that was a really good thing about the School of Arts and Sciences in the beginning, when charters first started, was it was a bunch of local parents, and I, I know there are a bunch of local parents here tonight for the program they want. It felt better, but to have a, basically out-of-town, you know, cookie cutter, school, the DOE, I feel, is sort of cramming down our throat and saying, they've shown that they're good, and so, you know, unless you can show that they're criminals, basically, you have to accept the charter. And that upsets me that we are being put in that position. And that's, you know, I'm, I'm looking at our attorney nodding because that's what she's told us, and that's who we have to rely on, because none of us want to end up in jail.
That's right.
But I do, you know, I want to.
That's where the power lies. It is.
That's where the power is.
The, the things that I'm concerned about are what I think we're all concerned about, and the gentleman mentioned, the principal mentioned Palm Harbor, and, you know, it's gotten an A, and it's one of the top performing schools. Well, we have charts, and we'd be happy to share these charts with anybody, and they show that, you know, compared to the average Pinellas school, and y'all, I don't expect you to be able to read this, but, in red is the average Plato, and, and blue is the average Pinellas. And what you see across here is, you know, the average Pinellas student, the percentage of whites is around sixty percent, and the percentage of, I mean, yes, and the percentage of whites is around eighty-two percent. And the, the thing that really jumps out at me on almost every one of these is the economic disparity. The economic disparity is vast. And if you want to see in, in red, that's the, that's the Plato, you know, low income, and this is the district. And that's what we're talking about up here, is I see, I read some of these applications, and they're talking about, we're going to help everybody, and we're going to, you know, all, the tide lifts all boats, but there's no transportation provided. So, if you don't live in this area, and by the way, the, according to state statute, once again, there's a weighted, waiting list, or a weighted lottery, so, if you live close to the school, you have a better chance to get in, that's the law. But, he's shaking his head, so if I've made a mistake, I'll, I'll let you correct me. But it, it says in the application that there's a weighted lottery. And there's no requirement to disclose the location yet. So, we don't know the location, we know that there's minimal bus transportation provided, and we know that the history of at least this school, while it has good school grades, I have to say, the schools in our town that have low socioeconomic status, they make good grades too. It's very corollary. And it's, you know, we can predict right now who's going to make a, a good grade. It's, it's very, and it's not as much race as it is economics, and I just want to say that over and over, because you just look at the economic disparities in, in Tallahassee and Leon County schools, and you'll, you can predict the grades. And it's the same way with charter schools. And so, I, you know, I looked it up and looked up every single one of the Plato ones, and it's, it's true across the board, so I just had to say that. Having said that, so I have a lot of angst about what a lot of other people have said about, you know, public school resources. I want to follow the law, and I think we have to. So, and, and at, at some point, I'd like to entertain a motion to table our vote tonight, after everyone gets a chance to speak, and just, just, we need to take more time with this. I think, you know, we've heard some really compelling arguments, and I just think we need some more time to consider, so we, we can either, I'll, I'll make a motion later, but I'd like everybody to get a chance to speak.
And that's what I, I'm sorry, and that's exactly what I said, that, that we need to table this and slow it down, and, and get good information.
All right, Ms. Rasmussen, Lewis Butler.
I too have toyed with this issue. The lawyer, our lawyer, Ms. Williams, has given us the law. And I was going to tell Ms. Williams yesterday, I want her to, to write it out, but I, we have it on our agenda tonight. The statute that we have to follow. I, I'm reading about charter schools. I know about charter schools because we've had many charter schools, and I've visited charter schools. We have lost four charter schools since I've been on the board. We've lost four, four charter schools. And, um, it, it could be for many reasons. Economics, finance. One, one charter school had seven hundred students. Today, they have zero. We don't know what happened. But we do have a staff person that's the overseer of all our charter schools, who brings the report back to us and can tell you exactly why these schools closed. Now, in such a time as this, to look at charter schools, we have trouble busing students that cannot go because you're in Killon. Somewhere I read where you're going to, you may want to build in Killon. I said, why not build on the south side in Frenchtown? What do you want to go to, what do you want to go to Killon to build? And you know, when you go to Killon to build, you're going to have a problem getting minority students there. So, I'm concerned about the minority ratio at, at school, the diversity of schools. It's important today, we live in a diverse world, but we want to isolate in schools and then get together later for social, socializing later in the community. Then we got problems. We need to get our schools more diverse. The location was not given, and, and, and that could be a reason, it's at Killon, but, and the, and the, and the part I read, I just see what Plato, either classical school had a, a location yet. That's the, the lead us on, because you don't know where you're going to be. And then you have, some people in the charter school have to pay, some of the students may have the money, the economic resource, they have to pay for the curriculum. That concerns me. Yeah, the students have to pay. The students have to pay for the curriculum. So, some of the students may not be able to afford to pay for the curriculum.
I don't know about that.
Right. And, so we have to make sure this, and as you know, Tallahassee came up, we have a concern issue in Tallahassee about resegregation, and it has not been addressed yet. This board, we're looking at that, the superintendent and the staff, we're looking at that now to address that issue. But, um, so that, that is a grave concern of mine as well, about, we want to make sure the trend doesn't come back. This is a new day. And, so I'm not, I'm not sure if my, if I'm around these parts or not, but I know that we have to go by the law, go by what the law says, and, and to make very sure that these needs are met. So, I'm going to be one of the ones as well that recommend that we pull it, pull eighteen part zero five and eighteen part zero six from the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis Butler. Ms. Rasmussen? Thank you. I think the first thing I want to say, and I'll just be brief tonight, because it sounds like there's an appetite for delaying the vote until two weeks later, but the first thing I want to say, as a parent of three very, very different children, that I am absolutely an advocate for choice, for parent choice. It breaks my heart when I get a call now, under the new law, from a parent who has every reason, in my mind, that's, that's completely valid, to, to want for their child to be able to go to this school instead of that school, and under the new law, we can't make that happen anymore because of capacity, capacity restraints. And so, that, that gives me great concern. The other thing is, and I don't, I don't doubt, I know a lot of the folks that are involved in the charter, the classical school, and I admire and appreciate them for their bringing this great school to our community. I think it's a wonderful thing for our children to have an option like this. But what really concerns me is that if a school like Plato, or a school like classical, would you work with us to address our problem of resegregation? Would you work with us to go into a community that needs you more than another community might? To have a, to be able to provide a diverse population for your students and others? Because we know that that is the world that they're going to go into. They're going to go into a world that does not look like them. Are you willing to work with us to, to address things? I mean, just put yourself in my shoes for just a second. Mr. Arnold, do you care about water quality? Well, we have to test our water for lead, do you, are you guys going to, I'm not, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but we have had a lot of issues that have come before this board that charter schools, quite frankly, don't have to deal with. And my concern is not the competition, because I believe we can compete. I want us to package our, our classical education package. We have teachers that use the Socratic method and teach Latin. We ought to have a track for our students, so that they know they can go to Leon High School and get a classical education, and also have a great football team, and a baseball team, and an orchestra, and performing arts.
And it be diverse. Oh, I'm sorry.
That too. But at the same time, if we have, you know, I understand the desire to want to have maybe a smaller population, or something that looks different than a big. population or, um, something that looks different than a big, huge school. Uh, I get all of that. And I think we could have it all if you would work with us. Would you work with us, Plato? To help us have two great charter schools that help all of our students and not just a single population? Because I think if you would agree to do that on your own, not because you're compelled to, not because we're compelled to, that we could work together and make Leon County schools public charter and traditional schools the best for all of our kids and all of our parents and all of our families. And if we could figure out how to make that happen so that we don't have schools that don't represent the broader community and we don't feel like we can't compete because we have to provide transportation and we have to provide ESOL and ESC and all, a lot of other elements that aren't necessarily required. I mean, the competition, you know. And you wanna talk, somebody mentioned the word power, and I'm sorry, that was really offensive to me because this is not about power. You guys have all the power and you know that. You know that the legislature has done mandated this. And that's okay because we can compete if we can have a more level playing field. Or if by choice, you as the providers are willing to just voluntarily work with us to make this community the best it can be. And if you're willing to do that, thank you, then I'm with, I'm willing to figure it out with you. And we, I think we all would be if, if that was your commitment with us. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. All right, um, I've heard lots of, um, phrases here tonight that have stuck with me. And the one that has stuck with me the most, um, thank you, Mr. Arnold, for being here, was that, um, that if we want something, we have to work for change. We have to work for change. And you're speaking to those of us that live in the capital city. We know all about that. I would dare say we've all been down to the capital at some point in our lives to advocate for something or be opposed to something. Um, something that may have been law, something that may be becoming law. Um, and in nineteen fifty, there was a young girl who, who challenged a law and her name was Linda Brown. And people told her she had to go to the school for black children. She had to walk by the school for white children. She had to follow the law. And she worked for change. She worked for change. And it changed didn't happen on that day. And she went through a lot of battles. But eventually it became Brown versus Education. And black students went to school with white students because she worked for change. In twenty fourteen, the Lee County School Board opted out of testing. They said, nope, we are not gonna do our standardized testing. That was in twenty fourteen. And because they worked for change, our lawmakers revisited all those sweeping changes to testing. Test, 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 test. And guess what's happened now? We have four fewer standardized tests because the Lee County School Board challenged the law. They didn't win that day. They, they waffled and they, and they had much angst as we do. And they had a member that said yes and then said no. And they, the court said, you have to do this, and they did. But the lawmakers heard them. On February the fourteenth, students from Parkland worked for change. They came up here. And the changes they want didn't quite happen. But because of them, bump stocks are now illegal. You have to be twenty-one to buy a gun. They didn't get quite what they wanted, it didn't go their way, but they fought for change. I urge us to fight for change today. I urge us to fight for change and support the superintendent and his recommend, recommendation to deny this charter. I hear what you're saying about let's table this and let's discuss it. I, I would plead with you, let's not draw out this angst two more weeks. Yes or no? And I'm like the superintendent. If this goes through, those of you in the room, locals were here, well, we fought ace versus pace and it was heated and it was ugly and I was not happy. And some ugly words were said and I apologized to Roseanne later. And, and now it is and we all work together. And we will do that no matter what happens in this room tonight. Um, but the law is not gonna change in two weeks, ladies. The statute is not gonna change in two weeks. We're gonna get no more or less information than we have tonight. I, that would be my opinion. And that by drawing this out two weeks, we're putting these people in angst, we're putting, we're, we're, I was like nauseous today. And I think I've heard that in a lot of people's voices tonight. Just anxious and nervous. Um, good cause. We have to have good cause to deny this charter. Historically, um, Plato, as well as charter schools in our community, they lack diversity. They lack having those that are economically disadvantaged. They lack real innovation. They do pretty much what we do. And we do it pretty dagum well. I came out of the classroom just three years ago. And I had students that came back from charter schools. Um, not all of them, there's, there's great charter schools out there and I'm not saying you're not one of those. Um, but historically, we've had, we've closed. Ms. Lewis Butler pointed out that several have closed here. The transportation is an issue. The location, we don't know. Um, and in five years, if both of the, let's just focus on the one. If Plato met the population that they're proposing, that would be a five million dollar hit to Leon County schools. Five million dollars. When I ran for office, I said I would be a voice for teachers. That I would fight for their salaries, which I lived on as a single mother making thirty-seven thousand dollars a year as a teacher. Paycheck to paycheck. And I swore I would fight for that. And I'm going against my words if I vote for this. I'm completely turning around and saying, pull money out.
Can, Madam Chair, if I may, can I be clear about one thing?
Sure.
So if, if we, if you do stand up and, 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 and agree with me on the just cause that we approve schools on an ad needed, as needed basis, just as the Florida Department of Education approves us on an as needed basis. If, if, if they go then to appeal to this, to the DOE, the state board, it's not like, it's not gonna cost you a million dollars. They just appealed. Your name's just not on it. That's all I'm saying. Let someone else, let someone else make, if you, I don't feel comfortable making the decision. Let someone else do it. You're talking about being boxed in and we have to. I don't, I don't believe that. We don't have to do anything. Now, I can only control one person. That's me. And I can barely control me. So, so all I'm asking you to consider is I think I've given us a reason, a just cause reason that we approve schools on an as needed basis as opposed to just, just approve, 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 approve. Or we'll sit here again and again and again and again. And it's nothing against Plato, but one turns into two and turns into three, three turns into six. And we can keep having this conversation next week, next year? How, until, at some point, I'm just asking to stand up and say no. And let DOE make the decision for us. I don't have a problem with that at all.
So I'll finish my thoughts because everybody else got to finish theirs. Thank you. Um, the, I, I do think that superintendent has made a, a great and rational, um, argument in that we were told no. We were told in Leon County that we had no reason for any more schools. We can't build another school. And so there is a contradiction in the law. Um, and, and I would urge, I would urge us to, to, to be that voice today and to work for change. I know, I know it's difficult. Superintendent said this yesterday. I don't, this is the hardest, the easiest thing would be to put it on consent, pass it, and let's just keep on moving. But he took a very, very difficult stance. Um, and I support him a hundred percent on this.
So I have a question.
Yes.
Madam, uh, attorney. If we table this, do we still come back and must we vote?
If you were to table it, it would be tabled to the next board meeting, which is within the timelines that we are afforded in statute. So yes, you would table it to the next meeting. You still have it under the statute. You have an obligation to either approve or deny, um, the charter. So you would be giving yourself two more weeks and an opportunity, I guess, to have additional discussion if that, you'd have to move it second and then get a majority vote to table. But if you get that majority vote, then that's what you would be affording yourself.
And failure to act defaults to DOE anyway.
Yes. It would, it, a denial and a failure to act give the applicant the right to seek an appeal, go to the charter school appeal commission and then to, uh, DOE. Um, I think with a denial, because you articulate the specific reasons, that's your basis for your argument before the, the commission. And DOE with a failure to act, you really don't have a basis, um, for an argument.
Okay, so we, we can, uh, some, um, attorney, so William, we can use one of these, one of the five for one hour just cause.
We can't because there's nothing there.
We're looking at a different statute.
Yeah.
Well, so what's your pleasure, ladies?
I, I'd just like to ask the attorney this question. It's a hard question. Superintendent says that we can use just cause as the capacity issue, the one that he's identified. Can we?
You certainly can, whether that will resonate with the charter school appeal commission and the D, and DOE as a valid reason. No.
That's what I was asking about.
Answer my question. I'm just answering a question. I know I'm sitting here with the big rain cloud on the top of my head. My job is to tell you all what I think the law says. Um, you guys have the much more weightier burden than I do. Um, so, I mean, you can bring forth that argument. In my mind, that is not, um, a strong argument because the charter school statute, especially for Plato and for high performing charters, it tells us specifically, you can only deny if you find one of these five. And that is certainly not in one of the, one of the five.
That's what I was asking.
Okay, that's your, yes.
Not in one of those.
It's not in one of those five.
Psych that as a reason. It just goes to the commission and they decide?
Yeah, the charter school appeal commission first. That's where you really, you have your, your mini trial. And then they're rec, they, they make a recommendation to either support our denial, our, our ruling, or not. And then that goes to the state board. You, um, it's added to a state board meeting agenda, just like our board meeting agendas. And each side has about five minutes to just do a quick presentation on their case and then the board votes.
I think very similar to what happened with Lee County and with the testing. That school board, they chose, I'm sure their attorney was sitting there telling them the same thing. You cannot opt out of standardized testing. That's what she told them. I, I would be almost a hundred percent sure. And they said, nope, we're gonna work for change. And they voiced against it.
Cause, so what the attorney's saying, it will, uh, it will go to, and we deny it tonight. It will go to the appeal. Okay, and, and, and I understand our names will be nowhere attached. And once it goes there, it's in the hands of the appeal, the appeal officer.
And it will most likely be overturned. You know, I mean, we have to, we have to be realistic and that, that's probably what's gonna happen. And we will embrace it and we'll move forward. Yep.
And we'll go ahead. Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, while my sisters of the board are making up our minds, their minds of where we're going, I have to tell you that I appreciate what you said and I'm not really taking issue with what you said. But I do need to go on the record. In as much as you said that you stand up for teachers and that's a good thing, we do too down here. Stand up for teachers and we stand up for students and people in the community. Just have to put that on the record again tonight because we are at, as you put it, a turning point in, 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 in what we're doing.
And I'll, yes. Thank you. And I wanna add to that, being, I've taught in this county for thirty years. And a, a member of the, uh, Leon County School Teacher Association as well. So I know about what the, uh, ground roots are. I know about the information and I know the, uh, the pharmacy, the performance of teachers and I know their needs. And, um, um, the reason I got on this board also to help teachers make sure they get a raise. And that's what I've done since I've been on the board.
Okay. I mean, we can, we can delay the angst or we can, I can entertain a motion, whatever. It's yours pleasure. As chair, I sit back and watch it play out. Ms. Bowen, aren't you sad you're not over here this year?
I am so sad I'm not here. But you're so capable and able to do this.
Cause I follow your lead, that's why.
That's right. That's right. Well, we see what our options are, ladies of the board. We can deny Plato, um, charter school application submitted to the school district on February first, twenty eighteen, and direct staff to prepare and submit to the applicant in the Department of Education the written basis for the, uh, denial. And option two is, we can approve the Plato Academy charter school app, application submitted to the school district on February one, twenty eighteen. And that's where we are.
Or we can move it, uh, for two weeks later. If you don't, if you don't act on it tonight, then you have two weeks, uh, uh, what is that, uh, what date is that, uh, council, February the what?
April twenty-fourth.
April the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
If we do not act on it tonight, it'll be April the twenty-fourth.
Or, the attorney's not gonna want me to say this, or we can, don't, or we don't take action.
Let me, Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Rasmussen.
Uh, probably against my good health, I'm gonna step up and say something. I spent thirty years, uh, working in the Florida Capitol. Um, Mr. Arnold, I'm all too familiar with how to advocate for change and within the confines of the legislative process. I served on, uh, I was the director of cabinet affairs when charter schools were first initiated. And I sat as a cabinet aide and heard appeals of charter schools for many years. So while I would love to waffle right now, that just isn't in my core. I can't do it. Um, I know the law. I understand the law. I'm compelled to abide by the law because I stood here and took an oath. I, I don't begrudge the superintendent or the chair for their desire to make a stand. Um, it's just not in my DNA to take a stand like that. I have to, I feel compelled to comply with the law that is the prevailing statute in this case. And so, um, as much as I don't like it and I'm sorry for all my friends in red, for our Leon County school teachers who work so hard, it pains me to think of approving something that I think is equally great for our community, by the way. But it pains me to think that this is going to drain the resources from our public schools and I will fight somehow or another to keep that from happening. But I'm gonna take you at your word, Plato. Um, that you're gonna help us address the diversity problem in our community and you're gonna help us make it better and not worse. And the same thing will apply when I, when we talk a minute. Um, so I guess I feel compelled, um, on legal grounds primarily, um, to, uh, make a motion to approve option two, which would be to approve the Plato Academy, um, as a highly performing replication, application, um, lacking clear and convincing evidence to do the contrary.
Do I have a second? Do I not have a second? I hear no second.
Dies for lack of a second.
Motion dies. I'm gonna make another, an alternate move.
Okay.
Um, I move that we, uh, table this. And we leave it up to the superintendent when he brings it back to us.
A second.
Oh, wait a minute. Leave it up to the superintendent, meaning?
Not sure if Robert's rules calls for when it has to come back if you table.
I'm tabling it and allowing the superintendent to bring it back when he wants. If it's in, within the deadline or, or outside the deadline, that's up to him.
That's segue.
All right, move by Wood. Second by Louis Butler. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carries four to one. Next item. Eighteen point oh six, Tallahassee Classical Charter School Application. Uh, we have some speakers to be heard.
Yes, Madam Chair, first speaker, Alex Howard. If you could come, give us your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Alex Howard. Address is eighteen twenty-seven Folkstone Road here in Tallahassee, Florida. Um, I am a child and a product of a public school down in Seminole County, Florida. Um, loved it. My wife is a product of a public school over in the Panhandle. And I, as far as I can tell, she enjoyed it as well. Um, I was a teacher in Leon County for a local charter school. Uh, I was there for two years. Um, at the end of my, or nearing the end of my second year, my wife said, we're gonna have kid number two. And I said, I guess I'm done teaching now.
Sadly.
Sadly, um, absolutely. And there, there's been a lot brought up about kind of the, the logistics about, especially getting a child to school. And, you know, how are we going to get? And, you know, how are we going to get these children to this school? And, and I cannot tell you. How many parents would bring their child to school and their child's friend to school? And friends and friends and friends and frie, like, they will get them to school if they think that that school will help their child. They will do it, they will find a way. There are so many children that went to that school, I don't know if I ever met their parent, which is a horrible thing. But that was the reality of our particular situation, is that parents were going to somehow through somebody, through the community, say, can you get my kid to that school? And I don't think that's supposed to say anything about Leon County schools, I can't speak to Leon County schools. I, I, I can speak highly of my public school education, and this is not to disparage that. But not every school is meant to serve every child. Not every school is meant to reach out to every single person and, and accommodate for every single need, it just can't do it, I don't think that's realistic. I don't think it can be done. And our school in particular, we weren't for every single student, we weren't gonna be able to serve them, I don't think that's a realistic goal. But the students that were brought to us, that were driven up in that drop off line every single day, and were in line to pick them up. Or grandma was, or grandpa was, or somebody was there to drop off that child and then pick them up, we got to serve them. I don't know why they came to us, but I know that while we had them, we served them and we loved them. And we wanted them to, to walk out of that building and walk into whatever high school they decided they could go to, and that they would be ready to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, the next speaker is Jamie Carbonell. Please give us your name, address for the record, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, uh, my name's Jamie Carbonell and my address is nine eight one six Thunder Hill Trail, and it's three two three one two. All right, I am a member of the nonprofit volunteer board for Tallahassee Classical School. In addition, I am a former educator with eight years of experience in the public school system, four of which were right here in Leon County at E M S P Godby High School. First and foremost, thank you to our supporters for coming out this evening in green, as well as to the families who have shown their support but could not be here with us this evening. We love seeing such an outpouring of support for classical education. Thank you to the school board members for taking the time to evaluate the merit of our application. Tallahassee is blessed to have a great traditional public school system that consistently advocates for each and every one of its students. With that said, we are looking to form a partnership with Leon County Schools. And to create an additional educational option for our community. At this moment, there is not a tuition free public option for classical education available. The goal of a classical education is to provide a content rich curriculum based in the liberal arts and sciences while focusing on civic virtue and mo, moral character. Our mission at Tallahassee Classical School is to instill a passion for learning within our students. Not only has this model found a high success rate amongst char, public charter schools throughout the state of Florida, but there are currently at least seven classical education co-ops within Leon County, as well as private schools utilizing this proven curriculum. With that said, Tallahassee Classical School will be bringing students back into the county that had previously left it for private and homeschool options. Furthermore, differentiated instruction catered to the needs of every student is at the forefront of our mission. Tallahassee Classical School will be open to the community at large and seeks to serve all students regardless of zip code or challenges that they may face. Tallahassee Classical School is an effort two years in the making. Countless amounts of time, energy, and personal finances have been poured into this project in hopes of making it a reality for our hometown. From the moment that Adrian and Jana asked me to join the Board of Directors, the level of research, passion, and love of learning was unsurpassed from the get go. I have no doubt that those attributes will carry over into a school that has a strong coalition of parents, teachers, and community members that work together to benefit student development both inside and outside of the classroom. Not only has the Leon County Charter School Review Committee recommended our approval of, of our application, but we stand here before you today with one hundred and sixty-five families who have committed over two hundred and sixty-five children to attend our school at this moment. We have only begun to scratch the surface of our community outreach. We as a community are asking for your support in bringing a high quality educational option to the ser, to serve the needs of all students in Leon County. Please vote yes on the approval of Tallahassee Classical School, thank you.
Madam Chair. Mr. Sean Arnold, he spoke on eighteen point oh five, but he has a, a separate card for eighteen point oh six.
Good evening, again, Sean Arnold at six two seven nine Dupont Station Court in Jacksonville, Florida. Um, I'm here also tonight as counsel for Tallahassee Classical. Um, I'd like to address a few of the things that were brought up during the, uh, discussion, and again, it, it, I think everybody in this room is in support of high quality education. And I know as, again, counsel to, uh, over a hundred charter schools across the state, that that is what the passion of these, uh, schools are. So many of the people are from this, the public education system, from the districts, uh, and that's where they've started, and it's where almost all of them start. Um, I was gonna address, oh, and here comes Ms., uh, Louis Butler, um, I'll address a couple of the other things, uh, that are there. Charter schools have to comply with all ESOL, ELL, ESC laws, they have to provide quality water for their students to drink. They have to, they have to abide by all those same health safety and welfare laws. Uh, some schools such as USC, U C P, which I mentioned earlier, actually have a hundred percent ESC population. Some, uh, we have lots of schools that are Title One, we have schools that range the whole gamut, uh, of, of, of schools. And, and our portfolio of clients look a lot like all of the district, the different districts. Ms. Louis Butler, um, there are no fees that charter schools can charge that public schools can't charge. Um, that, so there, there's no, there's no additional cost to go to a charter school, they're a public school. The money that goes to fund them follows the students that go to those schools. So the idea that there's a drain in resources, yes, there's less money in the coffers, but those students aren't, it's not your responsibility to educate those students anymore. So that money follows the school. So the idea of there being more money, uh, that money's being taken away from the school system, yes it is, but also those students are leaving the school system. And the money that goes to those students follows the students, that's the Florida law, that's the way which most school, uh, which, uh, school law, um, operates around, uh, the country. Once again, uh, in the, in the setting of, of the U C P and the cases from two thousand and five, and I, I've emailed to Ms., uh, uh, Ms. Williams. And it's, uh, the citation is, uh, uh, nine oh five Southern Second, uh, uh, nine oh, nine oh nine, so two thousand and five case. Again, just quoting directly from, "A lack of capital funding or the use of operational dollars to fund capital expenses away from a district does not constitute good cause to deny a charter school application." All of the statutes that Mr. Hannah mentioned were in existence at the same time in which the Charter School statute was enabled. All of those laws existed before the Charter School, uh, law, it was brought into, uh, was brought into existence. Therefore, the legislature knew what they were doing, the law is the law and they knew what they were doing. Um, uh, Madam Chair, the, the, the law on Brown was an abomination, charter schools are not an abomination. Um, I'm very grateful that Brown versus Board of Education was, was founded.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Lane Wright, Lane Wright. You could give us your name and address, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Lane Wright, I live at twenty-four nineteen Hayes Mill Road here in Tallahassee in Roseanne's District. Regardless of how you might feel, our state law allows for charter schools. Because we, as citizens of Florida, as residents here in Florida, have decided that parents like me need choices. We've, we believe that not every traditional school is gonna be a good fit for every child. And, and that some of these schools are go, that are, that are, we're zoned for, are not meeting our needs. I think Leon County schools are great, actually, I, I, I love teachers, I love public schools too. Um, but this idea that, that we're trying to, that we're draining and it's a competition, I just wanna remind people, charter schools are public schools. People talk about how it's taking money away, but it's, like, like the lawyer said, it, it's following, it's following the child. The law says charter school applications, like the ones for classical and Plato, can only be denied for good cause. It outlines a couple of those causes in the law, but leaves the door open for other ideas. Rocky Hanna has put up a variety of causes and, and they're different, some of them was, one was a mom and pop statement he said about, if we have a mom and pop charter school on every corner, we'll bleed our system dry, and that's just not true, it's, it's an exaggeration, first of all. We have four charter schools in Tallahassee. If we approve these two, which obviously the one isn't happening tonight, um, then we'll have six. Six among forty public schools in our county is not excessive. Parents need choices, the other part is about unequal systems, you're right, that, they are unequal systems, but not in the way you talk about them. I think about unequal systems and I think about the South Side where, where I live, I'm on the border, I don't know if you remember, but you came to a South Side community meeting when you were running for office and you showed us pictures of, of some of the South Side schools, giant blown up pictures compared to some of the schools on the North Side, you know that we don't have an unequal system already. And so to deny the opportunity for children who feel like their schools aren't a good fit, just feels wrong to me. And for children and for parents and families that are looking for a way out, that feels wrong to me too. The state, um, Rocky argues that the letter from the state says he can't open a school, and that's also just untrue. I have a letter, I, I actually read the letter, and that letter talks about until enrollment goes up, that we can't build a new school, you can't get extra money for a new school. It's not talking about charter schools, charter schools are supposed to exist to give parents choice. We're not talking about a need for a, a capacity issue, that's not what that letter was about. And you know that because in your op ed, you actually used that very example, uh, to, to argue that charter schools get special treatment. So that, that just seems a little disingenuous to me, that you're using that as an argument. Uh, but the fact is, that, uh, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker, Balki Long. Balki Long. Balki Long.
I apologize if I'm gonna sing that name up. Please give us your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Yeah, my name is Alka Long.
Alka, I'm so sorry, I saw an F.
I live on five zero eight Paul Russell Road, Florida three two three zero one, I live on the South Side, actually, not just on the border. I have two children, my son is nine years old and my daughter is twelve years old. And I personally grew up in Germany, obviously not here, and, um, I was taught the classical method in my school from day one, not just in high school, from day one, and when my children entered school, I said, oh, great, this is, you know, public school, it's all, I'm, I was all for staying home as a mom, but when school comes along, I was crossing school and I was shocked. I actually have here, and I would like for you to see this, a home book that came home with my fourth grader this year that I find very interesting. Because we're talking about learning timetables, and this home book clearly shows that we're trying to teach a fourth grader to think outside the box. So my, my position on classical education is that when we are in grammar school, we're teaching building blocks. We're not trying to teach them and help them to think outside the box because they're not capable of doing so. When we are in logic school, we're teaching them concepts, because then they have solid foundation in the building blocks, timetables, phonograms, spelling rules, grammar, um, they can di, they can pick sentences apart, they know how to, how to properly, uh, punctuate. And that's comes to this position in logic school when they can write an essay with a beginning, a middle, and an end, and they can actually do it very well, because they have been taught the building blocks, that's what you not find in a public school. When, um, when you go to the rhetoric level, you, how, they're gonna learn how to present, how to argue intelligently, how they pu, how they can speak in a public setting like that and defend their argument with, uh, information that they can back up. So I am all for classical education. My children both have attended classical schools, the only one in town is a private school, it's a Christian school. I personally believe that Christian as education belongs in my home and not in a school. But this is the only classical option I have found that really, you know, applies these principles of giving building blocks and then giving them concepts, and in a rhetoric level, you, you help them to present these concepts. And I really, really would urge you to allow this school to go forward, because there are many parents that want their children to educate it in this way, because that's how we educated fifty years ago, and this is how we should educate now. And unfortunately, I would like to convince you that we're doing this in the entire public school system, but I do know that takes a lot longer than just, you know, a few sentences. So I would like for this charter school to start, so we can see how these students are successful moving forward and how their minds are well trained, because then we might be able to convince the public school system to go back to this classical teaching method. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Leslie Phillips, Leslie Phillips.
Thank you.
Thank you, if you could give us your name and address, you have three minutes.
Um, my name's Leslie Phillips, I live at thirty-five oh six Sharer Road, um, and I have a son that is, um, a student in the Leon County Public School System. Um, I am all for Tallahassee Classical School, um, I feel like the charter school would provide frustrated parents with an option outside of what's offered, I have a round peg and y'all are a square hole. And we need something different in our community for our students that learn differently. Um, my son is an E S E student, we follow an I E P, and the I, I think, is supposed to mean individualized. But I find myself second guessing and questioning that at every single meeting. Um, there is a need in this community for parents who feel like there aren't enough resources to do things differently. Even with the homework, it's frustrating to get things that come home, and it's difficult to help your child because they're teaching them in a format that you're not familiar with. And I've had my kids say, well, Mom, we can't do it your way, because she'll mark it wrong if we do it your way, we have to do it this way. And I want my children to know that there are more than one way to think about things, more than one way to learn, or more than one way to, you know, do all sorts of things. Um, I feel like this classical education model would be a great fit for our family and for lots of families, um, lots of families that may not even know that it's out there and that it's available, because right now it's not. Um, and I feel like our community does have a need for this in the public school system. If I wanna go pay for private school, I'll go to private school and get it. But this is not offered to everyone as a choice, and I feel like that would really be, um, a positive move.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Iskay Mortilla, Montilla.
Oh, that's me, I.
I'm sor, I can't read handwriting.
I'll back you up, the handwriting, I don't know.
Please forgive me, you were in a hurry. Name and address, three minutes.
My name is Isaac Montia, and I live in sixty, I like Tortilla, uh, I live in sixty-two eighty-four Whittenfield Drive. Um, uh, so I, I too am a product of public schools, uh, I, I, I believe wholeheartedly in the public system, I love my community. Uh, we were what you call, I guess you consider a tral, Tallahassee transplant, uh, we li, we moved there about seven years ago. And, and I've been hearing a lot of words being thrown around, uh, about diversity and everything else. And one of the stumbling blocks, uh, was for us that we didn't feel like Tallahassee really accepted diversity, uh, with all the research that we did. I live in the northeast side of town, and I, talk about change, one of the biggest things that I found in change is by moving there and actually being part of the community and presenting them that there is options. And so when we moved to Tallahassee, uh, I, I, I didn't even know what charter schools were, growing up, we were poor at one point. You know, so, I, I guess what I'm getting as a father of four is, uh, I'm just in rule of, um, o, opportunity, options, right? I believe so, uh, uh, as well, wholeheartedly, the options allow opportunities. And I chose a different path than a lot of my friends growing up, and that's what led me to, uh, by God's grace, own a business here in Tallahassee. And, and I love it, and one of the biggest parts of our business is to give back to the community. So I think that there's always gonna be stipulations to everything that we find, there is. You can find your yes and your no's in every decision that we make in life, and we have to adapt to it. But I think by limiting and putting everybody in a box and saying, and I do truly say a box, because when you're saying, no, it's not a box, but then you're saying, no, this is the way it is, let's go ahead and pass this on to somebody else. You know, that, that's, that is pushing away, but you, but providing oppo, uh, providing opportunity allows for options. And one of the things that I teach my kids is, look for opportunities, look for options in your life. Sure, even for me, I take Uber in Tallahassee, because I love meeting people, that's, that's just what I do. And it lies, uh, and allows these opportunities to provide options and, and, and really to connect with our community. There's so much potential in this room, there's so much potential, I know you guys have a hard decision to make, but I guess, again, and I don't wanna take it by any bad time, is, it comes back down to this, opportunity. I wanna give my children the opportunity with the options allotted for them to make that decision, and that we truly care, we truly care about our educations. that decision, and that we truly care, we truly care about our education system. I'm all about pay raises for the teachers. I think they're underpaid. I really do. But what are we doing about it? We had the same issue growing up about these, these books and passed on books, and look at Oklahoma, what's going on over there, right? Teacher strike. We're talking about these things that are still happening in our community, but we're not stepped, I don't feel like, I feel like we could do, you know what? Tax me more, I don't care. Let's see our education step up, let's provide opportunities for allowed options for our community and for my family. I appreciate that time.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, Eric Saylor. Eric Saylor. Name and address, you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Eric Saylor. Address is eight-three-six Madera Circle. Thank you for this opportunity to address the board, Chairman, Vice Chair. As you can tell by my last name, my wife is one of the co-founders, Ms. Jana Saylor. We have four children, wonderful children, and we want to raise them and educate them in the public schools. We also fell in love with classical education model. Some of my schooling involved some of that back when I was younger, and I saw how much, how much more superior it was than to traditional public schooling. And we really want that. And when my wife told me that she wanted to go forth and try to start a charter school, I said, go for it. Honey, I will support you one hundred percent. I'm in grad school, I'm also an attorney here in town, I used to teach school, so I know how hard it is to be a teacher. And even though I'm an attorney, I work for the state of Florida, so we cannot afford private education. The cheapest private education option is about six thousand dollars a year, times four, that's twenty-four thousand dollars a year. I'm either gonna retire someday or pay for my kid's education. So with the option to do a school choice, found a charter school, I said, let's go for it. I've supported her, Mrs. Campbell, and also Ms. Carbonelli. So when it comes to this, I know Mr. Hanna, you had said something about mom and pops. Let me ask you this, have you looked at the charter school application process, how difficult it is? These women spent almost two years working on it and got through on the first time through. This is not a mom and pop operation. You have two educators and a business person, a CPA. And these women will work harder and harder to make the school a success, not only for our children, their children, but for the children of Leon County. So this is something that this community needs, it needs it a lot. And putting on my attorney hat, I've heard everyone talk about good cause, I do utility regulatory law. This education law is foreign to me. But I also understand that if you don't have a leg to stand on, and I totally agree with you, Ms. Rasmussen, you all swore an oath to follow the law. You stood up here one day, swore to abide by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Florida. You were all elected officials, and you have a duty to follow the law. If you don't like it, go to the legislature. It's right down the road. Talk to them, convince them to change the law. But until that time, I urge you to follow the law. And why would you spend a lot of money, Leon County taxpayer dollars, to fight something, to appeal it, when you know you're gonna lose, or more than likely gonna lose? Now, the option that someone spoke tonight was just leave it on the table and let the time run out, and then let it go to the state board and decide, then you guys haven't made a decision? That is one option, but I would urge you to make the choice that's consistent with the law and approve it consistent with the recommendation of your review board. Thank you.
Jennings Lawton De Priest. Jennings Lawton De Priest.
I know I spoke on the last school as well, but if it pleases the chair, I'd like to address just a few points.
Three minutes.
First point is-
Sorry, just repeat your name.
Jennings Lawton De Priest.
Address.
Four-two-nine-four Avon Park Circle, Tallahassee, Florida, three-two-three-one-one.
Go ahead.
A few points, a lot of statistics have been thrown around about low-income students in charter schools. As I'm sure all of you know, there is an opportunity for low SES students specifically to explore other opportunities of school choice known as step-ups for students, and that provides full scholarships to private schools for low-income students. That opportunity is not necessarily available to those who are above two-hundred percent of the federal poverty level, which is kind of more the group that you would see in a traditional charter, public charter school. Transportation came up a lot. While this is not necessarily the place for it, I will have the board know that it took me about two weeks advocating for a homeless student in the city of Tallahassee who is living at the Hope House Shelter to be able to get her to be allowed to ride the bus that already had empty seats on it to Raw. So I'd hope that you all would look into that. And since Brown v. Board of Education continues to be brought up, I'd like to point out that Martin Luther King III came to Tallahassee and led a huge school choice march a few years ago for our voucher program. He called school choice the civil rights issue of our era. If you look at Brown v. Board of Education, I think it's really important for us to look at how great desegregation was for students and how awful it was for black teachers. Black teachers were fired en masse, and I'd like to challenge the board, as well as Plato, as well as Tallahassee Classical, to go above and beyond to recruit minority students, particularly with the higher rate of gifted identification for minority students in minority teacher classrooms. There are a lot of issues that we could be talking about that aren't necessarily who's getting what money. We keep arguing about funding, but I challenge you to support these schools, to work with them, and to allow them to use their innovation, and for the school board to innovate as well, and maybe even look at doing a charter school within a district school if you're concerned about the locations. You have a lot of options under ten-twenty-two thirty-three. Please support these charter schools. They're an incredible opportunity for those who don't necessarily have access to step-up for students or have access to private education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, you said minority teachers are not teaching, what kind of students?
So if you look at the statistics, a minority student who is in the classroom of a white teacher is about eight times less likely to be identified as gifted. The rate of gifted identification is the same across a white student in any ethnicity of teacher's classroom. But it's particularly important that for gifted minority students, we really focus on minority teacher recruitment in the K through three when a lot of gifted identification happens.
If you could send us those statistics where you found, that'd be great.
Absolutely, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may address a comment made by the previous speaker, I want to apologize for the, for the mom and pop comment. I've certainly taken it out of context, and I didn't mean, I appreciate the hard-working effort you put into this. I did not mean to be disrespectful whatsoever. I think my intent was to say that if we have small schools opening all around our community, that was a concern of mine, but it was not to be disrespectful to your time and efforts at all.
Madam Chair, the next speaker, Laura Arnold. Name and address, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Laura Arnold, four-zero-six Locksley Lane, Tallahassee, three-two-three-one-two. I want to say thank you in earnest, Madam Chair and board members, for considering this issue. I did not come tonight expecting to speak. I thought it would be sort of one-sided, and I must say, I am very pleased as a mother who was looking at enrolling my child in first grade in the fall, that this is a topic of conversation and that you are all sincerely grappling with the ramifications of your decisions tonight. I really, really appreciate that. For us, we are definitely open to public school, and I feel like there could certainly be a relationship between charter schools and public school, and it's not in us versus them, but how can we as a community pull together to support our children and preparing them and setting them up for success in the best way possible as they grow into adults and contributing members to our society? For us, we are zoned for a school that I am okay sending my child to. It's not our favorite option, and so we're considering a lot of different options. In fact, we were driving around, eating dinner in the car the other night, sitting in school parking lots, like, where do we fit in? And for us, we are definitely leaning towards a private school situation. And I loved that someone pointed out, you could possibly be bringing people back into the system who are choosing to homeschool. I was homeschooled from kindergarten on, went on to receive my doctorate, and so thankful for that background that I have. But I think there's something to be said about the public school setting and that children interact with peers, and there's so many opportunities for enrichment. And I would love for our children to have that opportunity, but as it stands, we are currently going to stay out of that system because the lack of opportunities. And so I strongly urge you as a mother to please consider approving Tallahassee Classical. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, Scott Mazer. Scott Mazer, you have given a separate card on this issue.
Scott Mazer, thirty-three nineteen Dartmoor Drive, Tallahassee, Florida. I did speak on the other one, there were a couple of things that I just wanted to make sure that I pointed out. You know, this whole, this is a long story. It's been going on my whole career as a public school teacher. I remember back in the day when I had Ms. Mu born's daughter in my class, we ended up taking the social studies textbook, ended up outlining the entire thing, writing a paper off that outline, and then turning that outline into a play that we invited the parents into the classroom to go ahead and perform for. It was the last year as we went into some testing craze stuff that I had the opportunity to do the things that I wanted to. So I do understand that in the full context, the things that you're looking for in your, for your students, is the same things we want to do as teachers. And so when it comes to the laws that are being made, they're being made to create this strife between us, where you're not the enemy, we're not the enemy. That's not the case. What we want is we want to be able to teach in our classrooms. What we want is we want folks to go ahead and be elected at the legislature who will allow us to teach and not create an arbitrary grading system that creates failing schools with failing teachers, with failing parents, and failing students. It's not the case. And so to the economic part that the superintendent has talked about, there is an economic impact. When you take an FTE from the school system, that includes fixed cost money, like running the air, right? Driving the buses. Whether you have ten kids on that bus or thirty, it still costs the same to get that bus from point A to point B. So these are the things that negatively impact our public schools in the long run. So it's not about not wanting choice and opportunity. It is at this point in time about the economics of what it's going to do to our public schools when we have to make choices of, do we have an extra period in high school? Do we take opportunity from those kids? Do we have art, music, and PE in elementary, which this board has made a commitment to, which will be on the chopping block? These are the things that we're talking about. So I just wanted to make sure I put a couple of things in there that shed some light on some things. So I appreciate the opportunity. I look forward to voting some people out.
Thank you. Not us. This might be the first time Scott didn't take his full three minutes, I just want to point that out. I mean, it's very disappointing.
Madam Chair, last speaker, Marie Claire Lehman.
Marie Claire Lehman, nineteen-eleven Wahala Court, and I'm in Tallahassee. And I speak to you from time to time, and I always avoid speaking personally. And I'm gonna try to do it, and I hope I do it gracefully. But my children go to a school that was quite affected by the opening of a charter school in Tallahassee. And most of my friends, or some of my friends, some of my close friends send their schools, their children to that, to that charter school, and we're still friends. And that charter school has an A grade, and in two thousand seventeen had eight-point-four percent students that were economically disadvantaged. And the school that my kids go to that we're zoned for, where a lot of my friends' kids are zoned for, is a hundred percent, you know, because of free and reduced lunch and statistics, economically disadvantaged. And we're all judged by the same accountability system of a school grade. And people will say, well, I don't want to send my kids to the local school because it's a D school or it's a C school. But how are we supposed to improve our grade if we are dealing with the, if we are teaching the kids that have the highest needs when we don't get, you know, any, any more resources from the parents or to address those needs? Now, it's a vicious circle because those parents, of course, want better opportunities for their children, and I don't blame them. But we are, we're having to separate, your role is to separate the individual needs of parents and students and the overall needs of the school district. And every student in all of those schools has a right to have access to educational opportunities. Now, what happens in a school that doesn't have a high school grade, like an A or a B, is that we have to buckle down a lot more and offer far fewer opportunities and focus on the school grade, which means focusing on the test. And, and of course, that's not an environment where parents want to send their kids to. And that's your responsibility to address that, and I know you're thinking about it and you're trying to address it. But the more we spread our resources thin, the more we try to deal with individual choice rather than the common good that is public education, then we're not going to achieve it. We're gonna just have more and more schools feeling, and more and more parents feeling like, like I'm feeling tonight. And that's just in case my smile doesn't betray it, it's frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it for speakers?
All done for speakers.
All right, no more speakers tonight, and I believe unless superintendent has some additional comments or Ms. Owens some additional comments on, do we want to do, okay, yes. So we went over kind of the statistical on Plato, we went over the statistical on Tallahassee Classical.
While the committee, and we use the same committee for both charter schools, same, same number, seven individuals, one also reviewed finances. This school had fewer indicators to meet because it's not a high-performing charter school, and there are indicators that just apply to high-performing schools. They also are not managed by a management company or an ESP, and there's a standard that deals with ESP, so they didn't have to meet that standard. This, the committee found that this application wasn't as well-developed as the Plato Academy application. There were nineteen standards overall. Ten of those standards, a hundred percent of the committee felt like they met all of the criteria. Eight of the standards, six out of seven of the committee members felt like they met all the criteria, but one of the committee members did not, and felt like they only partially met criteria in six, in eight of those areas. The most concern was in the area of services for exceptional student education, and primarily related to a question that asked for a charter school to talk about services for different levels of students in terms of the services that they need, their least restrictive environment. And so it's divided into students who, eighty percent of students who can spend eighty, at least eighty percent of their time with their normal peers. And that's, the school did provide a description of services and education for those, that level of students, but the school did not provide any, any description of services or education description for students that are between eighty and forty percent. That means they can spend up to eighty percent with their normal, seventy-nine percent with their normal, normal, normal peers are, are a lot less than that. And then there's another level that's below forty percent, that's thirty-nine percent below, that those students are really with other disabled students most of the time in a smaller class, and they didn't describe services for that group either. So in this situation, the member, three members found they met the standard, three members met, they partially met the standard, and one member felt like they did not meet the standard. But overall, the school met the majority of the standards, almost all of them, and so six members approved, voted to recommend approval to the superintendent, and one member voted to recommend denial.
Thank you. Superintendent, any additional comments?
I think, no, Madam Chair, I think I've said enough.
Okay. Ladies?
I'll say something.
Okay.
Okay. I just wanted to appreciate the work that you classical people did, read most of it. It wasn't a s cookie cutter because it's a homegrown charter in many ways, although you are affiliated with the Hillsdale and, but you don't have a management company and, you know, for profit. So I appreciated those things. I did, I did look at, you know, comparable schools again and find the same problem, very few low socioeconomic kids compared to the district, and the same with black students. So like- So like Ms. Rasmussen said, if your charter does get approved, whether through us or through State Board of Education, I really hope that you will take a hard look at that. And I think that's going to, you know, because it's different, a lot of people don't even know what classical education is. It's going to take a lot of outreach if you really want to be fully integrated and represent the community. I think it's going to take a lot of work on your part to educate people what that is. I feel like, and I've said this on this dais with superintendent many times, we, Leon County Schools, could do a better job at offering options. We, it's hard because they usually cost a little more and, but I, I am very appreciative. I had a talk with Ms. Gregory today about some initiatives we're starting to take in some of our elementary schools and some ideas to make some differentiated kinds of options. So, because, because everybody doesn't like the same thing, and I do believe in choice, and I believe in public school choice, and I know charters are technically a public school, but this resource drain thing is the thing that's killing us, you know? It's, it, you're right, the, the money does follow the student, and so, you know, that doesn't hurt us as much. What hurts us is the whole infrastructure and the cost to the principal and the assistant principal and secretary. They cost the same whether you've got 300 kids or 1,000 kids. And so if both of these charters are approved, which I think they will be eventually, that's 700 students each. That's almost two schools, and our population isn't growing that much based on what we're told. So that's the dilemma we're in, and I, I think we're trying to say, this is nothing against the idea and the hard work of what you've done, but some of us are feeling uncomfortable just saying, okay, go for it. I don't feel like we have the legal basis at this point to deny it based on what we heard from our attorney, so once again, I'm going to recommend that we table this and leave it up to the superintendent to when he wants to bring it back. So that's, I'm making that as a motion.
Okay. Any other comments?
I appreciate.
So I'm being told we need a second for that motion right now. Do I have a second to table right now?
Second.
We can finish the discussion before we vote.
And then you can have discussion.
So I have a motion by Ms. Wood, a second by Ms. Lewis Butler, so we'll open for discussion.
Okay. I was simply going to say that I appreciate the fact that this group is from Tallahassee. They are our, our neighbors. They are the fabric of, they represent the community, and I appreciate that. And so I look forward to a continued discussion on where we might go with that. That's it. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, and I wanted to say that I, I appreciate the hard work that the classical put into this and the great ideas that they brought forward on educating all students. I appreciate that, and so we'll, I'll be looking and reading more about the classical.
So I, I appreciate, Ms. Wood always puts everything so eloquently and very, is much better spoken than I could ever be. She does a really good job, and I appreciate Ms. Rasmussen tonight too, to say, if this does work, we, we hope that you can help us with the issues that we have, because we are trying to address those issues, and we hope that that works together if we end up in that, in that boat. I do want to take a couple of issues a little offended, that we were called a square hole, and that someone referred to charter schools as superior to public schools. So I pulled, I had an article today from, we get the education feed, all kinds of articles from around the state, and there was a commentary out of the Orlando Sentinel that charter schools get Fs three times as often in the state of Florida. So I would, I would take great offense. How many charter schools have we closed over the last, Ms. Maggie, you said four?
Four.
And I believe, how many public schools have we closed since you've been on the board, Ms. Lewis Butler?
Uh, one.
One. One in how many years?
Uh, in twen, in about 18 years.
18 years. So I would take great offense to the statement that the charter school is superior to the public school. So I would offer up too, that Leon High School has a knitting club. Did anybody know that? A knitting club. My stepson came home with knitting needles. Yes, he did. We have an arts, I'm, I'm going to get, just, give me a minute, Tharp Street Corridor. We have a school with an arts magnet program. We have a school with technology magnet programs. I taught in a school that had a specific learning strategies class. I visited a greenhouse at Success Academy. It was incredible. The kids were out in a greenhouse. These are kids that have struggled in their traditional high schools, and they have ended up, and they were out there with dirt and coats and, and they were learning and they were loving it, and using words like hydroponics, and I don't even really, yeah, yeah, something with science and growing things. We have, I heard the other day a jazz band at Swift Creek Middle School, a jazz band at one of our middle schools. Did you guys know that? I had no idea. So, and the list goes on and on and on and on, so I would very much argue with you that we are not a square hole. All 34,000 of our students are not squares, and they don't all fit in our square hole, and we try to accommodate them at every turn. That would be all I have to say tonight about that. So we have a motion and a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Passes four to one. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate, appreciate your input.
Very much.
You can, you can stay around for the rest of the meeting.
All right. 18.07, selection of instructional materials, hearing officer. We may want to give it just a minute. Dr. Gail, I thought you were bringing pizza. Go ahead, Jolene.
Yes. Yes. Please start.
Good evening, Superintendent, Madam Chair, School Board members. Before your, for your consideration this evening, the superintendent has recommended the selection of an instructional materials hearing officer as required under state statute.
Move approval?
Second.
Move by Wood, second by Lewis Butler. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Nay. Oops, sorry. Oppose. No, we're good. I'll pass this unanimously. Sorry.
Thank you.
I had to rehearse that. All right. 19.01, upcoming meetings, anything?
No.
Financial statements, anything?
No.
Reports, board liaisons, none to date. Superintendent comments?
I just want to thank quickly, if I may, Madam Chair, Doc, Dr. Gail and her staff for putting on an, an amazing volunteer partner mentor celebration last week.
Yes.
Michelle, I can't thank you enough for all your time and effort along with, with Kelly Walker and her, and her staff. We just finished our PB and J drive. We're looking forward to start collecting all the peanut butter and jelly and reporting back to WCTV, so we'd like to thank all of our, our students for their participation to help feed hungry kids in our community, especially this summer. We had the Stomp Event this Saturday at the Junior Museum, Tallahassee Museum, Saturday morning, and, and there you go. And I'd like to just, before I go, to thank all of you for your professionalism and for the way you've handled this and that we live in a country where we can have dialogue and talk about things sensibly without yelling and fussing and screaming. And, you know, at times we might just have to agree to disagree, but I really appreciate how, how you've approached this and approached me and this board.
You did. All right.
De to, de to.
Continuing concerns, Ms. Bowen.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. I simply wanted to just say to the board that I attended a workshop over at Rickards High School a couple of weeks ago. You probably heard me talk about the need to try and find subcontractors doing that large project over at Rickards, and so I went. It was an outstanding opportunity. There were about 20-plus people there, vendors, concrete subtractors, electrical contractors, painting subcontractors, all in and hope to be trained, because it was a training workshop more than just meet and greet and eat. And so I felt really good about the numbers that were there, and today that was part two, and I didn't make that because we had to be here. And then there's going to be another part, three, on Thursday the 26th, and this is going to be at the Allstate Construction Office. But all of this is an effort to see if we can't find ways to increase job opportunities for those individuals as we're constructing that school. So I need to thank the superintendent and his staff, and particularly Rodrick McQueen and staff, they did an outstanding job. After it was all over, the people that were there were very impressed that we had allowed an opportunity for this kind of community input to, to be given and a notification that invited them to be a part. So we're doing, continuing to do some great things right. Thank you, Rodrick.
Thank you, Ms. Bowen. Any other business?
Yes, I want to add to that, that in the future, we may want to look at the name of that instead of calling, we need to look at the MBE program again, and I would begin with the superintendent to talk about bringing in the, the gentleman that retired from the city that knew more about the MBE program, how to handle it. We had, when I got on this board, and, and I, we had the MBE, and I remember it phased on out, and then we called it this enterprise here. And, uh, small enterprise.
Small business enterprise.
And that's not going to get some of the jobs that we want for, uh, many of the minorities, Superintendent Hannah, so we want to look at the MBE in the future.
I believe, if I may, Madam Chair, I believe that's a, a state law, that we didn't change the title, the, the law, the state law changed that title.
Right.
And, and this is, we, this has been discussed every few years, and as part of, in order to be able to address specific needs along race or sex grounds, you've got to be able to demonstrate in the area that there is a disparity. So you have to conduct a disparity study first. So we've talked before about whether there was a need for disparity study, whether there was, whether we, the economics worked out, because disparity studies are not cheap. And so we can certainly have some more discussions or, or kind of circle that back around. Okay. So, so that we can be reminded of what we need to do in order to, what we need to try to do, and then once we, you know, if you were to conduct a study, then you'd have to wait for the data, to, to, to look at the data to determine whether it actually supports the need for programs and, and policies that, that, that are targeted in those areas.
Okay. Okay. Isn't that why Daryl, Daryl Jones and all those folks came by McQueen a few weeks ago and told us how they are doing this?
Yes.
I think, I think, no matter what we call it, I think the district is really making an effort here to reach out to our minority contractors, and I think that's what, what Ms. Bowen was saying, that she just went to one and it was superior, so.
Right, it was.
I think if we have to keep this name, it's okay, but I believe the intent is exactly what we're doing.
Yeah, what we want to do.
I'm sorry. No.
What we want to do, we want to make sure, we want to watch this enterprise that we have title here to make sure it's working.
Yes.
And that's what we, that's what we aim to do. Make, we're going to watch it to make very sure it's working, because I got a call from a constituent, said it wasn't working, and that's, I said, I'll bring it to the board so we can see why it's not working.
Tell them to come to that workshop.
Tell the constituent to call me.
And invite them to the workshop. Madam Chair, may I say very quickly that I did something that I, not in a while, I attended an entire faculty meeting. Which one of you done that lately?
Oh, nice.
At one of your schools, I know. I went to Rudiger, they had a wonderful, wonderful staff meeting, and they served yogurt. Hello, Rudiger, thank you, I'm done.
So yogurt.
So did you, did you alert them you were coming before you? Because I've had people tell me, you need to alert the school and not just show up.
Yeah, there's a law that says we don't have to, but.
But I did, I did alert them.
That was a recommendation.
Yes, ma'am, I did.
Okay.
And they still invited me.
Okay. All right.
Just saying.
Thank you. Any further business?
None to come.
We're done.[1768.86]